Time is now 7:04. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles, here. Councilmember Beer, here. Councilmember Beckmeyer, present. Mayor Protem Bottelos, here. Mayor Big Stick?
Present. For those of you who either don't know or may have forgotten, please make sure that you place one of those parking passes in the dashboard of your car if you manage to find a space in the parking lot in the front. You can find those parking passes at the base of the stairs on the door. Just grab one, stick it in your dash, and you're good to go. You won't get ticketed that way. Sarah, do you have any notes you would like to share?
Tonight's meeting will be held in person and also on a Zoom hybrid. The meeting can be accessed via Zoom in the Zoom link provided in the agenda. It's also livestreamed on www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream, and it's televised on Comcast Channel 26. For those wishing to comment via Zoom, press the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak, and the deputy city clerk will call upon you when it's your term to speak. If dialing in, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute once called upon by the last four digits of your phone number.
Thank you very much. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rame Tushaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rame Tushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rame Tushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rame Tushaloni peoples. Councilmember Beer, would you please lead us in a salute to the flag? City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our special presentations. So first up, I have a proclamation and recognition of Dr. Heather Olson.
Hi, Heather.
Whereas Dr. Heather Olson is retiring from a distinguished public education career, serving as the Pacifica School District Superintendent from 2018. And whereas Dr. Hezer Olson has also served as Principal Director of Curriculum and Instruction and an Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services at the San Mateo Foster City School District from 2000 to 2018. And whereas Dr. Hezer Olson has demonstrated exceptional leadership through the introduction of new resources, such as the implementation of the eye-ready system in the math and English language arts fields, in addition to improvements to science and social-emotional learning curriculums. And whereas Dr. Heather Olson has expertly navigated the challenges of establishing and organizing the online infrastructure, electronic devices, and virtual resources required to support at-home learning throughout the COVID-19 pandemic in order to maximize efficient student learning. And whereas Dr. Heather Olson has exercised compassion for students' well-being, arranging additional support in the form of school supplies and meals during the COVID-19 pandemic, along with ensuring health and safety protocols in the return to in-person learning. And whereas Dr. Heather Olson has worked diligently to bring the Pacifica School District Workforce Housing Project from a dream to a reality, collaborating with the city and the community for the purpose of better recruiting and retaining teachers, with her dedication culminating in the recent project approvals from the Planning Commission and the City Council. And whereas Dr. Heather Olson has executed informed, balanced, and equitable decisions that have not only advocated for student success but have also positively impacted all students, staff, and families of the Pacifica School District as a result of over 30 years of service and education. Now therefore, I, TigerJazzTwirlsBigStick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby pay tribute to Dr. Heather Olson and wish her happiness and success in her future endeavors done this 26th day of June 2023.
It is my honor to be here tonight, and I appreciate the appreciations. As an individual that just spent four, five years with the five elected officials and a few extras in the years, I have just great respect for the work that you do and your commitment to the community. And from a personal perspective, I've always enjoyed walking down the street with you at Pride or getting to know you about something that you're interested in as well. So thank you very much for the honor. It has been my pleasure. Next week, Dr. Darnice Williams starts, and as soon as she has a spare moment, I will introduce City Manager Woodhouse and anybody else who would like to meet her, because she is warm, she is a powerhouse, and I feel great about handing the baton to her. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Beer?
Heather. Thank you. I feel emotional. Thank you so much for everything that you have done for our community in the past five years. It was a pleasure watching you gracefully maneuver a global pandemic with a lot of very worried, very worried families and parents, and I know how hard that was. And I feel like this kinship with you, and I really appreciate that you participated in the Pacifica Collaborative like fully, and you were there, so we all got to know you. And I think that's very special, and I'm really going to miss you. But I appreciate the example you have set of what it means to be a true community leader and someone who's taking care of all of our young people. So, thank you, Heather. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
I have a special opportunity to thank you, not just as a council member and for all that you've done leading our district and contributing that important resource to our community, but as my boss. Sorry. My boss's boss. Really, your leadership on the things that I care so much about and have dedicated myself to within my job within the school district, the libraries and technology, has been phenomenal what has occurred while you've been there, while you've been at the helm. We for so many years were trying to get more devices, more devices. And I know it's a pandemic, and there's extra funding and all of that, but it's about having the board ready. It's about directing, helping them see the need to direct resources from the bond into technology on an ongoing basis. Those commitments and investments are really key for us to be able to deliver instruction. And as we, you know, anymore, you know, we still have textbooks. Yes, we do. But pretty soon, that device is going to be more and more the textbook. So it's so critical. And in an underfunded district, it's so important that we made strides there. And so thank you for that leadership, and we're going to miss you. I'm very happy for you, though, knowing you're going to be enjoying your life.
Thank you very much. We did make huge strides in technology. We were headed there, and then COVID just accelerated it. Thank you, COVID.
Councilmember Bowles?
Hi, Heather. I've just gotten to know you in the last couple of years, really around the Workforce Housing Project on Oddstad. And I can't tell you, as an architect, what a pleasure it was to come and see, you know, you've had all the setup for the whole community to come see and talk to your consultants, your landscape architects, your architects, civil engineers. I mean, you were there to answer people's questions, to allay their concerns about traffic, so forth, to make sure, I mean, this so important project that can help our teachers stay here in our school district, but also live closer to where they work and as a quality of life. It's such important work and a huge undertaking that you've done. And you've done it building community partnership. You know, there were no complaints about your project after all that. I mean, that is really the way, you know, building consensus and addressing the public. It was just such a prime example, and I just can't wait to see that built. And for us to keep partnering, to try to find some more funds so that, you know, all of those 70 units can truly be affordable. Thank you for your leadership.
My pleasure. I hope to see you before then, but I'll see you at the groundbreaking.
Mayor Protem?
And since my children are long into adulthood, I've not seen you at school, but I see you all around in the community. And it's so appreciated that you spend the time in the community when the community's together. It's really a great thing, and I agree on the workforce housing. I only heard one complaint, and I had to turn around and walk away because it was so ridiculous. But it's going to be a great project, and thank you so much for everything you've done.
My pleasure. Thank you.
City Manager Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick. As you know, I normally don't comment on proclamations honoring others here at City Council, but for Dr. Olson, I'd like to take the exception because she's my counterpart, but for the school district. So we started in Pacifica around the same time, and Heather's responsiveness and collaboration and dedication to her job to the Pacifica School District and to the, excuse me for a minute, to the field of education is incredibly admirable, and it's been an incredible pleasure to work alongside her. For better or worse, we shared two-plus, almost three years of COVID. Those early years in COVID, we had extreme collaboration together between the city and the school district. And our collaborations with the school districts, both the high school districts and PSD, don't end related to COVID, but are instrumental to what this community collectively provides to its residents. So thank you for your dedication, and I wish you the best.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We do have one card from the public, but before we get to that card, my colleagues have said anything I could say and have said it more aptly, I'm sure. And so just to put that exclamation part mark at the end. Education, it doesn't get much more important than that in terms of who we become as a community. I had occasion to see one of my older teachers come through my checkout line recently, and it was a deep honor for me, as I had spent a while wondering about her health. And as I was meditating on her and the contribution she made to my brain, that gets extrapolated out to so many really good educators I was blessed to have over the course of my life. And then when it comes to you, you're the one who coordinates them. And so you wind up being the one who ensures the minds of the entire community for generations to come. I think the thing I read said over 30 years you've been at this?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years. So literally generations of minds you've touched who could become, heaven knows. If I told you I'd be sitting in this particular chair 30 years ago, I'd have thought you were maybe off the mark. And so we look forward to who rises to the occasion because of the work you have done over more than three decades, and thank you so much for that. The one card I have is from Elizabeth Bredahl.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Bredahl, and I'm one of the trustees on the school board. Dr. Olson, Heather, came to us five years ago when Wendy Tuckloff retired. I had only ever worked with Wendy, so I was concerned about change. But Heather has a way of making everyone feel at ease. She could make you feel like lifelong friends even shortly after you meet. Taking over the Pacifica School District as new superintendent, we looked forward to many goals. Then the pandemic happened. Schools shut down, moving to distance learning, reopening masks six feet apart, worries for the health and safety, not only of our students, but also our teachers and staff. None of us ever thought we would be making potential life-and-death decisions. We were supposed to be worrying about math scores, tics, and gophers. Heather guided us through everything that the years of COVID threw at us. She worked countless hours, and I'm sure with very little sleep. Although I believe those three years hastened her decision to retire, we are very lucky that we had her leadership to guide us through the COVID storm. Heather has worked hard to get our workforce housing through the Planning Commission and the City Council, and once completed, it will be a legacy from her time here in Pacifica. Being superintendent of any school district is often a thankless job, but we, as a community, owe Dr. Olson a huge thank you.
One more last plug is, while I appreciate the honors and the leadership, one of the things that did make it so, I guess, so safe was the support from City of Pacifica, Parks and Recreation. To have the police captain's phone numbers, cell phone numbers at a moment's notice is unbelievable. And we've received, through COVID, through storms, just amazing support. So thank you all for your leadership. I will be cheering from the sidelines, and this is not the last that you've heard of me. I can't wait to see more great things for the City of Pacifica and Pacifica School District. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you and congratulations. Before you head out, A, Emily, do we have anyone on the phone lines who wishes to comment? Anyone else in the room? B, I'd love to hand this to you personally, and perhaps you would take a picture with us?
My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have a proclamation, Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas the California Park and Recreation Society has released a statewide Parks Make Life Better public awareness campaign to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents' engagement. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness sessions, enrichment programs, free community events, and beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community, character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution by establishing safe and peaceful settings and serving as key points of service, helping our communities heal both physically and emotionally. And whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And whereas Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services through local, national, or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. Now therefore, I, TigerJazzTwirlsBigStick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the City of Pacifica and recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space, and facilities for the health, wellness, and development, inspiration, and safety of all Pacificans on this 26th day of June 2023. Director Palacio?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem. Councilmembers, Bob Palacio, Director of Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. So Parks, Beaches, and Recreation truly do make life better, and I think you don't have to look any further than our flourishing senior programs, our Pack to the Gills summer camps, where kids are having fun all summer. We also, you know, our beaches are filled with surfers and people enjoying our trails. One of the things that we will be doing this summer in honor of Parks Make Life Better Month in July is we're going to be taking two trips, maybe three, groups of our teens that are our daily skaters at the skate park, some of those kids who are just out there, and we're going to take them to skate parks throughout the Bay Area. And so they're going to get to experience different places. So we'll be doing that this July. And I also wanted to make sure I invite you and all of you to Frontierland on 4th of July. I think the event that we have planned will be pretty spectacular and a lot of fun. So I really appreciate, you know, the proclamation for our profession, for the ethos that Parks and Recreation stands for, and couldn't be more happy for the city and our profession. Thank you.
And Director, that July 4th, is that 11:00 to 4:00?
Is 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Frontierland Park. And we will have a shuttle coming from Oddstad up to the park. So if you want to park down at Oddstad, it'll be running all day longer in the event.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Well, I know this is acknowledging that Parks make life better, and I want to say that Bob Palacio is helping us make Parks make life better. And I'm very grateful to you for how instantly you hit the ground. I mean, we had, your predecessor had a long time to develop what we have, and it's great. For a city of our size, for a city of our funding, the things I've learned about what we do are amazing, and you are just right there with us, bringing us new ideas and new things to improve our parks and improve our PBNR. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beer?
I'd just like to second that. Thank you so much, Bob. Really, it's been a pleasure having you come aboard and just be, you're just ready. And it's so easy to trust you, and I can't wait to do some more work with you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Bowles?
And we have such great resources here and our mountains and ocean and, you know, but it takes a lot to manage. And obviously, we've been discovered since COVID, and, you know, there are some challenges that we'll be facing together as a city to solve those problems. I just wanted to share one little anecdote. I hadn't been swimming at the Jean Brant Pool since pre-COVID, and I went today, and it was such a joy. The water aerobics class was packed. There were at least 50 people in the water. They're like, you don't want to go in water aerobics, you know. But yeah, it's not, it's not just the health, but it's the building community and support for one another. It's such a key part to our city. So thank you.
Right, thank you.
And the fact that you bring new things, this idea of taking people to the other skate parks, I mean, that's great. Their parents may not have been able to do that, and that's their passion. And you're helping them, and they're staying off the streets. It's really important. So thank you for everything. So, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thanks.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I think one of the themes of the evening is the far-reaching effects that can be had. As I was reading through that proclamation, I was really amazed by item after item and the way what you do, what Parks and Rec do, is so versatile in terms of the health and well-being of the community, and how many offerings come through. It's really extraordinary, and it all boils down to the health of our community. And by having this versatile and robust program, thank you so much for the job you do and for overseeing that that job is getting done. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Emily, is there anyone on the phone line? Thank you so much.
Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. So, before we get to consent, I have interest in rearranging the agenda very slightly. I'd like to swap items seven and eight so that we hear seven, or so that we hear eight before seven. It's the Library Advisory Committee before budget is what I'm suggesting in case members are here who have served on library advisory. That way, they don't have to wade through budgets.
It's okay, it's me.
So, I'll make a motion that item seven becomes eight, and item eight becomes seven?
Second.
If that motion is aptly made, okay. So, a motion and a second, please vote.
The motion to rearrange items seven and eight to swap with each other passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. That brings us to consent. Are there any council members who would like to pull an item off the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will open it up to public comment for any items on consent. One of the cards said number five, but I think it meant public comment. So, just give it a moment if anyone wanted to speak on the consent calendar. Emily, is there anyone on the phone line?
That is an item five on consent.
Closing public comment, then?
Five is on consent.
Five is on consent, but it says public comment? So that's why I gave the opportunity to just make sure that that person didn't want to speak on the consent item. Would anyone like to make a motion or discuss anything on consent?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
The motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Beer passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public comments on items not on the posted agenda. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the City Council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the City Council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. Please address all comments to the council as a body rather than any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. Simply put, it's not a dialogue. We don't answer questions in real time if you were to ask one. However, sometimes, under certain circumstances, we will make clarifying remarks on the other side of public comment. So we might respond in that fashion, but we won't engage in dialogue with you when you're talking. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Persons addressing the City Council shall adhere to time limits and not disrupt the conduct of the meeting, and not make threats against any person or the public order. The mayor or their designee may remove or cause the removal of an individual for disrupting the meeting after providing the necessary warning pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.95. With confirmation from the city attorney, that removal is appropriate. First card I have for speaking is Giovanni Guadagnini, followed by Sandra Varga and Ken Miles. Gio, you're up. Please state your full name for the record.
My name is Giovanni Guadagnini, and I want to bring up a couple of things. One, I had the lawsuit, when I had my lawsuit in 2014, I asked for the sidewalk to be put in on Palmetto going up to West Lane, and it was supposed to have been put on the east side toward where the freeway is, but I understand it's going to cost a lot of money to clear out of the shrubs. So you guys put the sidewalk on the west side where the cliffs are. How come you guys put the sidewalk in but no safety rails? Or have you guys maintained the sidewalks so people like me in a wheelchair, walkers, or people with canes have to tremble over the ice plants on the sidewalk? And how come the police can't make revenue money for all the cars parked around Pacifica, flat ground or not? According to the California handbook for getting your license, you're supposed to curb your wheels. Someone forgets that it doesn't go straight across. How come revenue is not being made? And how come, I seen on Gateway Drive a street cleaner, how come they don't, Pacifica doesn't have signs saying no parking between these hours for street cleaning? Why are they just cleaning the center of the streets? And then I seen them paint the streets on Gateway instead of painting them. How come they didn't repave it? They never been repaved. And I grew up in this area for 55 years, and they saw these potholes on Gateway Drive. You think I want to pay to have my wheelchair fixed? One castor's $1,200 bucks.
So that was three minutes. Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Welcome.
Is Sandra Varga present? Okay. If not, then we'll move on to Ken Miles, followed by Paul Toda.
Good evening, members of the City Council. I'm going to speak about this wildfire season. I provided a handout for you, and if I get cut short past my three minutes, please read it because I might miss some points. And once again, the fire season is here, and we had numerous fires that are popping up over in the East Bay and various counties on the other side. But looking back in, from the past, as a member of the historian society, back in 1929, the town of Montero, just down the coast, burnt to the ground. It's not, people forgotten about that. And more recently, we've had major fires at Paradise up in Lake County, Santa Rosa, Sonoma, Yosemite, Santa Cruz Mountains down the coast. My sister lost her home in Santa Rosa. Can that happen here? I think so. This year, we've had heavy rains, and we have bumper crops of vegetative growth and lots of weeds which we've been knocking down. And also, we got 4th of July just around the corner, and hopefully that nobody would be setting off dangerous rockets and explosives, which will create a hazard for everybody living in Pacifica. And then soon, around October, November, we'll be having hot easterly winds, the Diablo winds, that'll be coming here and really drying things out, and that's one of our most dangerous times when a fire, if they're there, will be plain by winds. And most of the areas in Pacifica are actually unprotected and endangered, including the hills around Lindamar, Pedro Point, East Rockaway, Vallemar, Echar Park, which is covered by dense groves of eucalyptus trees, dead pines, thick shrubbery, dry grass. And several years ago, I brought some communications with the City Emergency Safety Commission and talked about questions such as evacuation routes, need for fire breaks, and how would fire trucks get through these clogged streets with cars and RVs? And I heard, I haven't heard anything from them, and I don't think there really is a plan. I don't know. Let me know sometime. What we could do is create some fire breaks like GGNR had done around El Granada, and we have Sweeney Ridge and other GGNR lands here in Pacifica. Why can't they provide us fire breaks here if the city could work with them? Also, the chipper program, which the North County Fire Department had several years ago was great. We worked clearing our dry brush and debris from our properties, but unfortunately, many property owners at large, wooded lots, did not participate. Well, thank you very much, and please read what I have here on the rest of the things the city can do, such as has a forum.
Thank you, Ken.
All right.
Paul Toda, followed by Gail Benton Shoemaker and Larry Bothan.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for all you do for Pacifica. I'm so grateful for your generosity and your time. My name is Paul Toda, one of the founding members of Tree City Pacifica, and I am here to address the new permit fee of $1,000 to prune and remove a tree. I've heard the argument that Pacifica needs to practice cost recovery. In other words, the cost of enforcing an ordinance should be passed along to citizens so that the city can recoup expenses. The practice of cost recovery presumes, of course, that no one pays taxes for city services, however, we all do, and we pay more thanks to Measure Y. It also presumes cost recovery is a standard practice among cities. However, many cities, such as Fort Lauderdale, use a sliding scale. If only one or two people benefit from a service, then those individuals fully bear the cost of that service. However, that cost diminishes as the number of people served increases. I suggest to you that the management of Pacifica's tree canopy affects our entire community and not just the homeowner. The urban forest is a community benefit, combating climate change, improving our health, and increasing property values. Other cities recognize this reality as well. South San Francisco charges $112 for a tree permit. San Bruno charges $105. Both fees are less than half of our old fee of $238. Those cities make this fee more affordable to encourage residents to follow their ordinances. We have also heard the argument that a higher fee will result in fewer trees cut down, and that homeowners who fear that a tree may fall won't hesitate to pay this new fee. We believe both assumptions are problematic and that more people will cut more trees illegally, given the $1,000 permit fee for tree removal and pruning. We also know that low-income families will be the most hard-hit by a fee that is akin to a regressive tax, charging low-income and high-income people the same amount. I request that you bring this fee back to council for consideration. Thank you for your time and for all you do for our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi. My name is Gail Benton Shoemaker, and I am speaking as a member of Tree City Pacifica. At the last City Council meeting, the fee schedule was embedded in the budget agenda item. There was no discernible indication to the public that fees would be voted on that evening. Thus, we were surprised to learn that the council voted to increase the tree permit fee from $238 to $1,000, a more than 300% increase. The way this fee was approved appears to lack transparency and doesn't align with the partnership Tree City Pacifica and city staff have formed over the years. We are strongly opposed to a $1,000 fee for tree permits. This is an undue burden on citizens and will encourage illegal tree removals. In the past, code enforcement has not enforced penalties for violations of the tree ordinance, and the likelihood that they will do so in the future is slim. Illegal tree removals can be dangerous, causing situations such as flooding. When people do not get tree permits, there is no opportunity for neighbors to appeal the removal of a tree. Also, illegal tree removals mean that replacement trees will not be planted, thus reducing the city's canopy. Tree City Pacifica lobbied for the passage of Measure Y to help the city afford to hire an arborist. Ever since the past city arborist retired, we have requested an arborist at goal-setting meetings and budget meetings. One arborist handling all tree-related tasks, such as the model in Pacific Grove, could be more efficient and cost-effective than the current use of multiple consultants. For 40 years, the city has supported the tree ordinance by keeping the permit fee low. They understood it was for the greater good of the urban forest and the community. We are requesting that the council bring back the fee schedule for reconsideration, and in doing so, please keep the fee for tree permits at $238. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Larry Bothan, followed by Linda Quinn, and then Cheryl Coulson.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to ask that City Council hold a study session to update the public on where we stand on the Coastal Commission's actions to block the city's plans for its local coastal program. In March, all of our political representatives at the county, state, and federal levels visited the site at the Sharp Park seawall. Three months later, the public still doesn't know what came out of that tour. The silence does not bode well. We have to move quickly if we're going to have any chance of securing outside funding for resilience projects. I understand the city is struggling with all the business in front of it. The housing element is a huge challenge, but if we don't move to protect the most vulnerable parts of Pacifica now, none of the other stuff matters. We can't serve two masters. The Coastal Commission and the progressive elements in this city would have us believe the only response to sea level rise is managed retreat. Some want to see the coast return to its natural state. My question is, which one? The farms that existed before the Ocean Shore Railroad? The coast side of the Spanish settlers? Or the pastoral coast side of the Alone Indians that existed before any of that? While that ship sailed with Portola, whether or not you call our existing coast progress, that's what we live in. You can't challenge that with the stroke of the pen. The only natural state that can occur if we remove coastal protections and accept managed retreat is flooding. That means our precious beaches would be underwater, too. As a homeowner, I'm tired of being demonized for my selfish greed to protect what I've bought and paid for my entire working life. No matter when you bought your house, I'm sure most of us could not afford to buy it again now, but that's not our fault. But if you think you're off the hook because you're a renter or because you live in the hills, think again. The cost of embracing managed retreat is not just the cost of relocating all our infrastructure east of Route 1. That alone would cost hundreds of millions of dollars. Route 1 itself would have to be moved, along with homes and businesses. Where would you put them? Okay. I thought that was my time. Anyway, so Route 1 itself would have to be moved. Most of that space is already occupied or unbuildable. And no, the greatest cost will be to Pacifica, the state, and every taxpayer in it because there is not enough money in there is not enough money in California to compensate every home and business owner that loses their property through the actions of zealots. Managed retreat is an unfunded mandate that amounts to illegal seizure of private property. Under the laws of eminent domain, the state is required to compensate property owners for land taken for other purposes at fair market value. If beaches are so valuable to California, then let's see how much they're worth as collateral for the loans it would need to pay every property owner fair market value for their property. And who do you think will pay for that? Taxpayers. Unless you're in the tiny minority of the super-rich that never pay taxes, that bill will be handed to us, all of us. Pacifica's response to sea level rise is an LCP that protects the most vulnerable and populous areas of Pacifica. It is the most cost-effective way to meet the future head-on and preserve it for future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Linda Quinn is up next. Please state your name for the record at the beginning of your comment. Linda Quinn?
Thank you. My name is Linda Quinn, and I live in Pacifica. I've been here for 10 years. I echo whatever that guy said. And I am happy to see the Sharp Park priority development area on your agenda. I have four questions on a related matter. The first is, how is your development area realistic without shoreline protection? My second question is, there is going to be another September or October meeting with the Coastal Commission. Will the city of Pacifica be prepared to respond to the coastal protection issue? The third question is, has the city made any efforts or have had any progress on getting funding? Because even if you do believe in protecting our shoreline, we have to get money federally and statewide. My fourth question is, can you please put shoreline protection on your agenda to hear more public comments on this? And then my last comment is, while there's a debate on whether we should protect our shoreline, remember, if it's related to climate change, we are all responsible, not just the people living by the coast, but also the people living in the hills or in the inner state. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Carlson, followed by Frank Vella. And I'm going to call for Sandra Varga one more time if she has returned.
Good evening. Cheryl Carlson. I and my husband own the property on San Peter Avenue, known as the Carlson Field sometimes. I'd like to echo the comments of the gentleman who spoke just before me. So my comments are also regarding the Coastal Commission's response and recommendations for the LCP. And I know that there is a meeting postponed in March and that there's to be more of a hearing in the fall, either October or November, or September or October. But to my knowledge, there hasn't been information shared with the public, and especially the people that are most affected by decisions that may be made by the city with the Coastal Commission. So I really recommend, in terms of transparency, that it's really prudent for the city to schedule special study sessions on the issues and invite all its citizens who want to attend. But especially let those who are directly affected by these decisions that the city may consider. I believe there's a lot of people that may not actually know that this is what the Coastal Commission has recommended and that the hearing was postponed. So I think it's really prudent for the city to let those people know. Because the decisions have costs, monetary and others, that citizens may incur if the city chooses to go forward with certain decisions. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members and staff. Frank Vella is speaking as a longtime Lindemar resident. Last council meeting, we presented over 120 signed petitions from concerned citizens regarding our local coastal plan and specifically Beach Boulevard protection. City council has championed on the ability to listen to the public, yet in this case, the public has been asking for a special study session and feel that the council has not heard their request. We have been asking for feedback on the March 9 meeting with Anna Eschew, Kevin Mullin, Ray Mueller, and other representatives. No response has been given. Questions have been asked about our response to the Coastal Commission reply for our local coastal plan and what? We may be responding to the upcoming Coastal Commission hearing. So far, no response has been given. Some answers are that the staff is too busy. Understandable. There is a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night regarding the beach resiliency plan, yet this meeting is from 6:00 PM till 7:30, and seems to be little time for sufficient questions and answers from the public. For those who are not aware of our concerns, it's about our infrastructure, mainly on Beach Boulevard, which will affect our entire city. Recently, there was an opinion piece published in the Pacifica Tribune stating that our concerns are out of fear. Well, isn't the constant statements being made about sea level rise and climate change a fearful tactic? No wonder people are concerned about Beach Boulevard and the push for managed retreat. The false claim that protecting Beach Boulevard will only be helping a small number of homeowners is absolutely false and is a constantly made misleading statement. The issue and cost here will affect everyone in Pacifica, residents, businesses, recreational facilities. A seawall may or may not be the answer. Many countries around the world deal with ocean issues in different ways. Don't we believe in science finding a solution? There is a claim that this is also a way to encourage development. If you want to talk about the development opportuniness on the site we are sitting on, yes. This site can bring some well-needed income to Pacifica if it is protected. The current seawall has worked for over 50 years, or about 50 years. It's served its purpose, but now it needs reinforcement. As the opinion piece goes on, it's clear that the constant push for managed retreat is a goal of some. Most residents want protection and not to retreat. The public is asking to not just be listened to, but to be heard. Hardly recall a council has not responded to a request by so many citizens for a thorough discussion on such an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. My last two cards are Sandra Varga and Anita Reese. Sandra Varga, are you in the room? If not, then Anita Reese. And if anyone else would like to speak, you're welcome to fill out a yellow card in the back. It will be brought up, and we will call on you.
Hello, I'm Anita Reese. I'm the executive director of the Pacifica Resource Center. And at the last meeting, two weeks ago, I shared our annual report to the city council. And at that meeting, I shared one of our strategic priorities is to educate community leaders and raise awareness about and compassion towards vulnerable community members. And as part of that work, I'm here to highlight our Pacifica Safe Parking Permit, or PSPP, project. It was launched in June, June 29 of last year, so we're just about a year old, with an initial eight permitted spaces on city streets. A ninth space was added on October 4. And in order to participate in the program, folks have to move their vehicle every 29 days and work towards returning to housing. To date, we've helped 24 individuals from 17 households through PSPP. Two returned to permanent housing in January of this year, just over six months after the program started. Three were exited for not meeting the requirements of the program. Four others chose to leave the program. Nine are currently in the program, with five on the waitlist. All have a connection to the city of Pacifica through either family or work. And 86% shared that the high cost of living is what caused them to become unhoused and live in a motorhome. Despite the fact that 22% of the folks that we've helped returned to housing within the first six months of the program and 11% since the program's inception, PSPP participants have been regularly harassed by people, by people who are excessively honking as they pass the sites at all hours of the night to disturb them. And more recently, their vehicles have been vandalized. PSPP is a city program managed by PRC. Participants want to return to housing and are working toward that goal with us. Most work in Pacifica, all spend most of their income in Pacifica. Please help us in supporting some of our most vulnerable community members so they can get off the streets and return to housing. It is not illegal to be unhoused on the streets or in a motorhome or in another vehicle. If you see someone targeting PSPP or other motorhomes in the city, please say something by contacting the police department. Compassion is a core value of the city of Pacifica, and all residents should feel safe where they sleep.
Thank you, Anita. Emily, do we have anyone on the phone line?
There are no raised hands.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak can come up. If not, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for council comment. Oh, before we do, though, one thing I did want to say. Kevin, when we had those tours of Beach Boulevard with our legislators, did we post the information publicly that we provided for them? I appreciate that it's all available in public format one way or the other, but that concise synopsis?
Yeah, we had created a coastal projects issues summary and provided that. And I know that it's been distributed to Mr. Vella and some members of the public, but I don't believe it is on any of the project websites, but we could do that. It's a March update, and that was sort of the informational fact sheet that was provided to our legislators.
And that fact sheet informed what the tour was and the information we shared with our legislators and congresspeople. So perhaps we should post that publicly so that everyone can see what those tours consisted of.
Sure. We can do that. And I guess, well, I'll verify. I don't think it's up there yet, but we can make that up there shortly.
All right. Thank you. As far as Coastal Commission goes, our staffs are working together now that we've gotten feedback that would inform a Coastal Commission meeting. We've been working with their staff to try to address the various points. I appreciate that our staffs are communicating. At this point, we don't know of any policy changes that diverge from what council recommended. And we would need our staffs to finish having that conversation, I would imagine, before we can update the community one way or the other.
That's correct. Regarding the local coastal land use plan, we're working on early discussions with Coastal Commission staff on the comments they have made. And we will provide updates to the community about that process later in the summer when the timeline for that effort with the Coastal Commission and future public meetings is developed. But we don't have any dates or timeline for that at this point.
Okay. And as far as the seawall, the Beach Boulevard Resiliency Infrastructure Project, we have a meeting tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Community Center, 540 Cresby, to design the preliminary design phase of that project?
That's correct. It's 6:00 to 7:30 at the Community Center, as you noted, and it's regarding Phase 2A, which is about the preliminary design, including landscaping, hardscaping, beach access, community amenities about the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. It's important to note that that meeting, that project meeting, is not about the local coastal land use plan update. As I mentioned previously, that's a separate project. So it's not about that. It's about the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project.
So I just want to take the opportunity to make clear, as we go forward through the process of figuring out how to get the seawall up and running, which is the direction of previous council and continues to be the direction that we're moving forward upon, our staffs are working with Coastal Commission staff to see if there needs to be any discussion of policy going forward or if we're going to continue with what we set forth to Coastal Commission prior. Councilmember Beckmeyer, did you want to add?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments and acknowledgements. I appreciate the folks that came out tonight and that expressed their opinions and their needs for information. It is a long process, as Councilmember Beer points out frequently, and we know it. But it gets, I think, when you're sitting in the chairs we're sitting in, we know how long things take. And it's frustrating, I'm hearing the frustration, when you're not hearing from us what's going on. And the sense that I'm receiving, and I've received in emails from people, is they don't think anything's going on. And I want to disabuse everyone of that notion. Because what is going on is the meeting that's happening tomorrow night, that's moving forward our own process. And we have two council members that are participating as our subcommittee in that process, listening to the community, engaging with the consultants and with our staff. So we're moving that project forward. And in terms of the support we're seeking from our state representatives and our federal and the tours that we had, the work that goes on and is ongoing, literally every week, is making sure that those legislators understand our needs in Pacifica. Especially for the ones that I'm in touch with, who spend a lot of time in Sacramento, it's very important that they understand how different Pacifica is from some average of all of the state of California. And we need to continuously update them and their staff members about what our conditions are, what our neighborhoods are, what our needs are. And we're doing that work. So it's, you know, I tried to report on it during council communications, and I've been given some feedback that my reports are a little long, and maybe there's a way I could be more concise. And so I'm working on that. But I just felt I had to say something right now. For years, I'm going to close with this, for years, years prior to this, prior to Mary and myself being elected, we've been working with our federal representatives, at that time Jackie Speer, and then Jackie Speer and Anna Eschew together. And now, due to redistricting and Jackie Speer's retirement, Anna Eschew is our Congresswoman. And through years of effort with the Army Corps, we are engaging to have a study done. We're asking for that. The pressure's being put on them from our representatives in Congress at the federal level to bring those resources to Pacifica, to look at our unique coastline and help us with the planning and addressing what we need to do to protect ourselves. So I don't know how much more I can say about that in terms of, I mean, I don't have the specific names at the tip of my tongue, as Kevin Woodhouse usually does, about the different levels of study that are needed and that we're seeking to have from the Army Corps. I don't know if you have the ability to give at least the names of those levels of funding and the goal that we're trying to move forward with Anna Eschew. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes, at a high level. And more detailed information is in that coastal issues summary memo that we'll post on the website. But regarding the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering Studies, there's a program called Continuing Authorities Program, which is a funding program that's available to the regional areas under their authority to fund. And we have two studies. One's called Continuing Authorities Program 103, and one's called 204, that are looking at both beach or sand replenishment related to the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project, as well as the related to, study related to the Esplanade area. So those are two specific studies. And then, in the future, the request has been, both to Congresswoman Speer previously and now to Congresswoman Eschew, is to really encourage a larger Army Corps study that is called the General Investigation, which literally takes an act of Congress to fund that. But it is a program that we would like to accomplish or get to in the future, and we're working with them on the strategies. or get to in the future, and we're working with them on the strategies to do that.
Councilmember Beer.
I also wanted to make sure that folks are aware of our supervisor Ray Mueller and his infrastructure strategy, so he's working on a regional infrastructure strategy plan to cover his district, and so that's another thing that's going to be happening through Supervisor Mueller, so keep an eye out for that. So there is work happening in different places, and I guess I want to apologize for not sharing enough information, and I know that's what we need to be doing, and we need to do it better, so thanks.
And Gio, if you're able to email comments, I'd appreciate seeing them. If you're not able to email comments, stick around so that I can get in contact with So we're going to go now to council communications. Who would like to speak? Mayor Protem.
Okay. And I try not to say everything about every meeting I go to, because I could be here for an hour, or three or four, but I'll try to highlight some things. I did go to Coleman Creek, we have a little pinch of Coleman Creek in Pacifica, so I go to their meeting, the Fairmont Homeowners Association, City and County Association of Governments, their regular meeting, and legislative meeting where we talk about what's happening in, with the bills. I went to coffee with a cop, which was quite enjoyable, talked to a lot of different police officers, and had a cup of coffee. Smart Coast, California, Smart Coast, California is a separate group working on the, getting these seawalls and everything else accomplished that you're looking for. It's, again, a long process. They have an attorney that works for them, that works on each seawall project, but it's only one person. I went to the Economic Development at the Community Center, which was a good program. It was in the afternoon, and helping different individual small businesses. The Emergency Services Council for San Mateo County, we definitely discussed fire. I know I harp on the SMC alerts all the time, but if you go to smcgov.org, only one in seven people get that alert, and every time I go there, I ask them if they can make it opt out instead of opt in, and right now they can't, but you will have to call there yourself, I mean, go online, call, but get on the alerts. It's really important to know, especially ahead of fire season, and they also have Zone Haven, which will give you directions in case of a fire, and how to get out and where to go. And that's really, really important, and they also discussed a new plan for the coast that Ray Mueller developed. It's called CRISP, and it's combining all the services on the coast, which is a really important thing, because we have our fire district, they have their fire district, we have our police officers, they have the sheriff, but combining all the information together with the entire coast, and of course, the Emergency Services Commission passed that and is funding it so that they can begin that process.
And what does CRISP stand for?
Oh, yeah.
Coastside.
Coastside Resiliency.
Structure.
Strategic.
Plan.
Service Plan.
Service Plan.
Service Plan.
Strategic.
I have it. If anybody wants it, I have about 10 pages on that, and I can send it to you. And so back to the seawall, I met with Elise from Berman, Mark Berman's office, and she asked me what my biggest concerns are, and we met at the Chit Chat. And so what is my biggest concern in Pacifica is the seawall, and she understands, Mark Berman understands, every time I meet with them, that's our biggest thing that we discuss with them. That same day, Ray Mueller had an opening of his office on the coast, which is the first time a supervisor has had an office on the coast, so that you don't have to go over the hill. If you have concerns, you can meet with either Ray or his staff at his office, which is in the shops at Oceana, and so it's very close for us to get there, and he's going to allow other people, like the Harbor District, if you, to come there also and use his office. At that meeting, I talked to Anna Eshu about the seawall and the importance of us needing the seawall. So wherever we go, we're engaged with these people, it's really important, and we discuss it with them. It's my number one thing, so I talk to everyone about it. So Ray Mueller was also at the Democrats' meeting, and I went to a Fog Fest meeting, Council of Cities meeting, I went to the Flood Sea Level Rise Committee, and all they're talking about is the bayside. It's like, really almost annoying to me. And we also met with a group from Catalonia, Barcelona, Spain. They were so nice, and they donated the statue that we have at the Community Center, which is going to come down, but where it's going to be placed and what we're going to do there were the topics that we brought up. It still has a long way to go, too, but that was, it was really nice to meet with our sister city people who care about what we care about. And we walked on the beach. They said it was similar to where they live, although it was 40 degrees there, and I went, for a minute, I went 40 degrees. It was extremely hot.
Right.
Extremely hot, and the day that we went on the walk, it was windy and cold, but they loved it. They said, oh, it's so much better, we'd be happier here. So we do work in collaboration with all kinds of other people. We don't just sit here and do one thing. So that was, I even have more, and I'm going to stop because I think that's enough.
A 40 degrees Celsius is 104 Fahrenheit.
No wonder. No wonder.
When I met with Elise from Berman's office, I also met her at the Chit Chat Cafe and then took her up into Unbeach Boulevard. Councilmember Bowles.
Right after the last council meeting, I went up to Santa Rosa for Civic Wells Climate and Energy Policy Conference, and it was so wonderful, and I was just going back through all my notes, and I could talk for two hours on that, too. There were, you know, elected officials and so forth there, but there are also a lot of government employees, nonprofits, other organizations working across the state on these issues, and it was really neat to see that collaboration happening and that education across sectors happening. There were, a lot of the presentations were from Sonoma County, and the lessons that they learned after the fires there that really devastated multiple communities, and the way they came together and the county Office of Sustainability sort of took the lead in coordinating with the different cities, I mean, we all struggle with staff issues and so forth, you know, just looking at grants and processes and funding, and so their office kind of became the key to get out the information about money and helping cities kind of collaborate. And I was so excited to hear from them, and I don't really know what's going on in our own county, but I got introduced to our county sustainability office leaders, and I'm going to be meeting with them, too. Again, to see how we on the coast side, who sometimes feel left out, you know, can make sure we have a place at the table there. You all know Ann Edmondster, she was there, a Pacifica resident, her mother was mayor here before, she now is in Petaluma and lining, leading their climate commission, which is a permanent commission in their city, and I think they're one of the most advanced pushing or bringing forth policies that are really visionary. They just approved banning new gas stations, for example, knowing that the state is moving to all electric cars, we have enough gas stations, why would we need to move more? And so, and then other cities are kind of taking some of their policies. Let's see. Yeah, I'm going to try to meet with Alyssa and Elizabeth and share some of this information as they're leading the city in some of these efforts. Just great stories from Berkeley, working on building performance standards, and then energy leaders, just, the state is really working to double the capacity of the grid and to shift the load issues, you know, as we have solar that's great in the middle of the day, but we need to address the edges. And the goal really is, you know, obviously grid sustainability, but this will all end up bringing the cost of power down, which has also, you know, become a burden to our Night I came back, I met with the Pacifica Climate Committee, and we're talking about Transit Month, and I just learned about some new Samtrans on-demand shuttles in both Halfman Bay and East Palo Alto. This is where they don't have enough people for a bus service, but they have somehow gotten these on-demand shuttles. It's kind of like calling an Uber or Lyft, where, you know, within a certain range, they'll pick you up, it's a one-cost fee that's shared in the community. So I'm going to try to dig in and learn more about that. And then the, those communities, including the midcoast, have also been looking at road analyses and meeting with Caltrans to look at potential projects to improve their circulation, and Caltrans helped identify projects for 70, that cost $77 million, and then they immediately found funding for $40 million. So, and that's just kind of inspirational, that maybe there are things that we can do that to start really studying what our needs are, because the money is out there. And that was the other message of the conference, there's so much money coming from the Inflation Reduction Act, and we should be prepared to go. And then the next day I met with Commute.org, and they're, they have a survey right now that's specific to individual cities to understand people's commute patterns, and again, this will be data that goes into researching possible shuttles in the future. It had not gone out to Pacifica when I was at the meeting, and I, really cool, I shared it on social media and then got an email back that afternoon from the director, they'd already had 450 responses from Pacifica. And it's now shared on Connect with Pacifica as well, and yeah, there's a chance to win $250, so do it, give us your information. I attended the Planning Commission meeting on the housing element, and just really appreciate staff and especially Samantha Hauser for her leadership on these issues, and really trying to dig in to make sure we're going to get the right kind of projects for our city out of this process. I met with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and actually, we were, we started talking about the housing element, and to Ken Miles's question, they are wanting to really understand emergency access and evacuations as part of that, too, so those discussions are happening. Sue Forgot, we attended, and Mary, the Economic Development Business Resources and Networking event, which was really great, and brought in a speaker on how the Small Business Administration from the county can help our businesses, many of whom are still struggling financially, even though, you know, maybe their businesses and sales are doing well, but the debt that they carry getting them out of COVID is still really burdensome, so there are resources out there. I also met with Elise from Mark Berman's office and also Josh Becker about similar issues, and also transportation, that's, Elise from Berman's office really wants to get into that with us, too, and has some interns this summer that are going to help us do some work. Went to the Sanchez Art Center exhibit on resilience, which was excellent. And then the, save this for last, the Beach Coalition, just wanted to announce their cleanups, so on the 5th of July, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., at both Lindemar and Rockaway Beaches to help clean up what will, I'm sure, be a mess, but try to pick up your own trash before, on streets and as well as beaches, and make sure you follow the rules.
Did you say the 8th of July?
No, sorry, the 5th of July, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
And don't put your fireworks in a paper bag and put them next to your house. Make sure you.
Pour water on.
Bucket of water.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Oh, my turn. Thank you. I'm going to be so brief, because I was out of town for a lot of the time since our last meeting, and so I didn't attend a lot of meetings to report out on, but one that I retended that I want to make a highlight for the public and for staff, this was the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee, which is a CCAG, City and County Association of Governments, committee. We have presentations every month from Tom, I forgot his last name, who is from BASCA. BASCA is Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, and I've been attending our North Coast County Water District Board meetings. I see Jack Burgett in the back, and Ann DeJarnett was here earlier, thank you for being here. Often, their meetings fall the very same day that this meeting falls, so I get a kind of a twofer, which is great, because Tom goes through his BASCA report pretty fast, but then it's really wonderful that Adrian from North Coast County Water pulls out a couple of those slides and then reiterates it, and so I kind of go, oh, yeah, I knew about that, oh, yeah. And it's really all about how the reservoirs are quite full. Not all of them are all the way full intentionally, because they want to allow for some additional space for runoff, they don't want to fill them all the way to the top, and then they're spilling over. But they're using this term in BASCA called the concept of One Water, and what, you know, it's sort of like One Shoreline, it's including wastewater, stormwater, it's dealing, everything dealing with water. So one of the things that pricked up my ear was that they're looking at grant support services to allow member agencies to avail themselves of grant-writing resources. We, the city, are not the member agency, North Coast County Water is the member agency, if I understand the relationships right. But one thing that we are partners in, in an interesting way in Pacifica, that I always find so inspirational and I wish we could extend it, is our treatment of water and our wastewater system, and then the use of that water, the reuse of that water, for irrigation. At the San Francisco-owned Sharp Park Golf Course, but also some of that water waters Ocean High School fields, and it's referred to as purple pipe water. Oh, and you can, when it's available, you can pick some up at North Coast County Water to water your own garden. What's going on, Jack Burgett and everyone in the audience, that I wanted in our staff to know about, is that they gave a big old presentation about this wonderful way that they put this whole thing together for Sharon Heights Golf Course, which is on Stanford's campus, as far as I can tell, and using purple pipe water to water the golf course and all this, like it was the first time anyone had ever done it. And I'm going, once again, Pacifica's little light under a barrel, right, this happened many years ago, and I don't even know all the details, except that it's really cool, but one of the things that got my attention was that there is money, and Len Maderman is, and One Shoreline are looking at similar projects as this Sharon Heights Golf Course project, as we have already implemented in Pacifica. They're looking at similar projects and putting it under One Shoreline for Millbrae, Burlingame, and the county, and Coyote Point, and federal and state grants are available, quote unquote. So what I said to them at the end of the meeting is, what about federal and state grant money available to extend what's already in place? But I realized, okay, now this is the part where the council member gets out of her lane and doesn't have all the facts and needs to check with staff, because I don't know if we're producing a lot of excess capacity. we're producing a lot of excess capacity water that could be filling those purple pipes. Maybe we're right at steady state and yep, that's a great idea, but that's really not applicable to Pacifica. Or maybe not. Maybe this is an opportunity for us. So I wanted to bring that forward to everyone's attention because these are the kind of things that we learn about at these meetings and you don't always think, you don't know in advance even when you know what the presentation's going to be, but you don't know how that might really directly relate to something that's going on in our town. And one last thing I'll mention that was super exciting is when they talked about innovative projects that they were looking at in one of their webinars. And they talked about the, with North Coast County Water District, the fog capture pilot that Samantha Hauser brought forward. And it's just when you're sitting in this meeting, it's like a pride point, right? When you're thinking, oh, Little Pacifica is doing this great stuff, but we need to do more of it. And the more we're out in the community, the more everybody's hearing about this and bringing these resources to light, the better. So that's all I'm saying for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was going to call on Mary next, but Christine, did you want to dovetail real quick?
Yeah. Just something that Councilmember Beckmeyer just said about the purple pipes. We just gave our house tours again last week and I just want to tell everyone that you can do your own purple pipes. You can capture the water from your sinks and showers and so forth and use them to water your gardens directly. And, you know, that's water that you use every day that can be reused. And especially if you can reuse the laundry, the water from your laundry, no permits are even required. It's a super simple thing to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Beer.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Hello, everyone. A couple of things I wanted to hit on from, I'd have heard from my co-council here. So the on-demand, the SAM Trans on-demand, there was a pilot here in Pacifica. It was only in the Lindemar Valley, however, and so it, there wasn't enough ridership. And so we might want to take a look at that and suggest that maybe it's the other side of town that might be a better place to pilot that kind of project. Hunter Pence was out here today with the Pacifica Beach Coalition picking up trash in Lindemar. Everyone was so excited. I don't know, so many people sent me pictures of Hunter Pence and I was pretty jealous that I didn't get to go down and see him. But I think that's super cool that, that he came out. So thank you, Hunter Pence. Look at me thanking Hunter Pence for coming out to Pacifica. We really appreciate you. Yeah, come out again if you'd like. There was also some information that came out of the county about some new fines for illegal fireworks that the county has put into place. I think it might be a good idea for us to share information with our community about what that is and how and if it would affect Pacifica in any way. And so, City Manager Woodhouse, if you have any information about that, if you could share it, that'd be so great. I'd really appreciate that. Because I know in the past, right, people are upset about fireworks and they want us to raise the fines and things. So if there's conversations happening at the county level, maybe they're happening at the state level and we can do something about that. But I don't know that for sure because I haven't read through the ordinance that the county has passed. So whatever information we can get and share about that, I would really appreciate it. So I'm, I'm going to talk about the Safe Parking Program. We, we as a council created a program where we have put people in the public right of way and have put them. We've put them in a place where they don't feel safe anymore, where the communities around these folks that we put in the public right of way are harassing them and making them feel unsafe. And so again and again, I need to say that in Pacifica, we really need to support all of our folks. And if we have people who are part of a city program and part of a program running out of our Pacifica Resource Center and they have a little tag on their RV and they are working to get housed, then leave them alone. Let them sleep, let them go to work, let them find housing. They're in the program for a reason, not because they want to live in their RVs, right? And so please, I'm begging Pacifica and all, all the people out there, you know, if you see something, say something. These folks are part of our program. We need to keep them safe. They need to be able to sleep at night and go to work and feel okay. And, you know, it's a lot of work to try to get housed. You have to meet with your case managers, you have to fill out all these papers, you have to be on top of everything. You have to be, put your name on all these different applications. And I know because I have a family member who's in interim housing right now and who's trying to get housed. It's not easy and it takes a long time. And so just the fact that we were able to help two or three people get housed, that's amazing. In a, in a year, that's amazing. So thank you for hearing me out. It's, I, I don't, I don't feel happy that I have put someone in harm's way. And I just hope that we can all work together just to make sure that, just leave these people alone, you know? Let them get housed. Can't be that hard. All right, I'm off my soapbox now, but thank you, Anita, for being here tonight. A lot of meetings were canceled, so our Economic Development Committee meeting was canceled because of lack of quorum, but I'm curious about that because I think what's happening, what might be happening is that there's an email that's going out that says, if you're going to attend, please respond to this email. And I think that some people don't check those emails, but they're going to show up at the meeting, but then before they have an opportunity to like say that, then the meeting's already canceled because there's not a quorum. So anyway, we can, we can talk about what that could look like coming up here. What else? Our Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee through CCG, that meeting was also canceled this month. I went to Council of Cities in Foster City and learned about their lagoon. The lagoon that's colored. Did you know that they put coloring in that lagoon? Anyway, I, I learned a lot of that night about all the work they had to do just to create the lagoon. Yeah, so, and with my position with Cal Cities Peninsula Division, there's a couple events coming up. So there's going to be a Giants game on September 27th, Giants versus Padres. I can send out information for that if you'd like to support Cal Cities through that event. That would be great. The League of Cities Annual Conference is coming up September 20th through 22nd, so registration is already out, so please do that. And then we're going to be hosting a mental health event on October 6th in Santa Clara County because our Peninsula Division covers San Mateo and Santa Clara County, so we switch counties when we do events. But that should be really great to be able to talk about that. And I think that's it for me for right now. I think I'll have a little bit more to say during our discussion about the budget, but for now, I think I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Beer. Jack Burgett, thank you for having joined us this evening. And it was good to see Anne here earlier too. Lots of news out of Ukraine this week. My heart continues to be with the Ukrainian people. Bullying worldwide, anywhere is not cool. On the 13th, I got to attend the Rotary Club with Kevin. We gave another State of the City talk. I want to say thank you to Kevin for putting together that package that I could then go and chat away about everything that the city's got going on. I couldn't do that unless you had facilitated all that work to begin with. And thank you for the staff for the remarkable amount of work you do on a constant basis that gave me something to talk about. On the 16th, I attended the Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly. They had a new executive director. And they talked a little bit more about a bond measure initiative they'll likely bring up in 2024. It would be a $1 billion bond measure statewide in order to address housing. And it's a part of their Plan Bay Area 2050 planning efforts. They had to share that they were running a $1 million structural deficit as we were talking about budget and the various strategies used to shore that up. There were a couple of presentations, one about place and economy and another about efforts driving regional businesses. And finally, we ended by celebrating the Association of Bay Area Government's 60th Anniversary. So there was a spot of cake and that gave me time to talk to Carlos Romero a little bit in East Palo Alto and deepen some relationships, chatting with colleagues. Later that day, Ray Mueller opened up his coastside office in Half Moon Bay. He's making himself and his staff more available to the coastside. For some people, it is a little bit more of a trick getting on the other side of the hill if they do want to talk to their county representation in Redwood City. And so he's making it as easy as possible for everyone to have direct access to him in his office and thereby the county and their services. I was a little humbled. I was asked to speak after Anna Eschew. Hopefully my remarks were adequate enough, but it was a moment for me personally. The next day, we saw Ray Mueller speak at the City Democrats meeting. And a little later in the afternoon, I attended the Millbrae Juneteenth Celebration. It was really a lovely event and it inspired me to want to start exploring what Pacifica can do in the future to honor the Juneteenth holiday. It did inspire me to show up at the Planning Commission meeting briefly on the following Monday. And though I didn't stay for the meeting itself, I did want to take any opportunity to express the importance of Juneteenth in terms of freedom for all Americans. And so I took that opportunity, that moment. Happy belated Father's Day to everybody. On the 21st, there was an Open Space Parkland Advisory Committee meeting. The highlights were the developer of Lindemar Woods Project came by to say that he does wish to speak at OSPAC about that project. So I think that's going to be slated for the meeting in August. Stay tuned to the public if you wish to hear the developer talk on that subject. And there were also members of the GGNRA present, as they always are at the OSPAC meetings. In this case, they specifically began by addressing some Memorial Point concerns. Specifically, they did everything they could to finally get in touch with some technological guru through the MTC so that they can maybe start pointing traffic away from the one lady's house who keeps getting inundated by visitors. And the other low-hanging fruit they identified was creating new wayfinding signage. So hopefully that'll be up in about a week or so. And then meanwhile, they're going to be working more robustly on getting their planning efforts together. There's some points that they're going to need community input on, especially whether or not to close the, I believe what's known as Polywog Trail. It's going to be a community discussion coming at some point, but it is going to be coming. And then the neighborhood themselves had the opportunity to speak. And at the end of the public comment session, the GGNRA leadership did meet with the neighborhood away from the meeting. So it was a good thing that the neighborhood actually got to start talking to the source. That brought down the frustration, at least for a moment. So we'll, we'll see what becomes of all of it, so stay tuned. There was also an update on the charter update process, which will be coming to us sooner than later. I think the 19th is when they're going to receive the, or discuss the questionnaire and then it'll come to council sometime shortly thereafter. And their next workday is going to be on the 8th of July. That'll be up at the Ani Trail at the top of Fassler. And they've been having a lot of success with those workdays. So I encourage the community to go and participate in trail rehabilitation. It's been a tremendous success. The next OSPAC meeting is going to be at the 19th of July. I'll be at a LAFCO meeting and won't be able to attend that one, so my alternate will need to take over for me. On the 22nd, I joined with Mayor Protem in meeting our delegation from Catalonia to discuss our relationships as sister cities, first of all, and also what the plaza might be when the Portola statue will be removed in front of the community center. Catalonia has generously offered to pay for whatever the plaza becomes as something about community and brotherhood internationally. So stay tuned for that. It's good news on the way. And later in the evening, I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy meeting. It was bittersweet as we got to say farewell to our executive director, Jan Pepper. But our new executive director, Sean Marshall, is going to be exceptional. She was actually there for the inception of PCE once upon a time and then later joined properly as the chief officer under Jan and now is stepping into the role after a robust reach-out process to find a new CEO. So welcome, Sean, and we're in very good hands. Notable, we received an A-minus rating from Standard and Poor's. That's PCE's first A-level rating. Part and parcel with that are some very good money management practices we've had for a very long time, so much so that we have something of a surplus we need to figure out how to spend. I, it looks like we'll be serving on the subcommittee to figure out where to put the excess funds. So again, stay tuned, good things on the way. We heard about Senate Bill 537, which is Becker's bill relating to remote meetings. That's passed the Senate, which is good news because for a moment we weren't sure it was going to and is now going to the Assembly. I think the short version is if you live outside of a 40-mile range, you'll be able to attend the meetings remotely, which at least in terms of Peninsula Clean Energy is helpful since one of our members is in Los Banos. And then there was more about the 24/7 time coincident energy. We're pushing it back a little to 2027 at 99% because there was a lot of issues due to supply chain during pandemic and the prices have risen on the procurement for energy needs that we have. So as a result of this, we're pushing the goal back just two years. 24/7 time coincident, 100% of our energy will be renewable by 2025 technically. We'll have enough energy that it could be distributed if that solar could translate to the nighttime, which largely it can't. And so a large part of the process has to do with procuring storage so that we can then discharge that excess energy at night. We also approved a project agreement with the Sunzio Wind Project in New Mexico. It is a ginormous project. We're talking gigawatts of energy and it's a 13% of Peninsula Clean Energy's load. And we're just taking a small portion of the huge project. That also informs the 24/7 component because wind energy can operate at nighttime when solar is no longer present. So that was a big deal that we got that one through. It's a huge boon to our energy portfolio. Again, congratulations to new CEO, Sean Marshall. And our next Peninsula Clean Energy meeting will be on July 27th. Attended the Council of Cities in Foster City and checked out their lagoon system, which was impressive. And then I attended the San Francisco Pride Parade. I marched with Safeway. So that's most of what I've got, except one thing coming up. Mary Beer and I will be doing a television taping, it looks like, on the 30th. We'll be discussing emotional intelligence as my premise and mental well-being, I think is going to be the logical extrapolation. So I look forward to getting together with Mary for that taping and then it will be presented sometime shortly thereafter. So again, stay tuned to PCT, good things on the horizon. And that will kick off a series of like shows I intend on producing with regional leadership. So for example, Ray Mueller presumably will be the next guest on the show. And this is designed not for, as a personal talk show, but as a forum for whomever is the mayor at the time to then be able to engage in regional leadership about issues affecting our communities. So what I'm trying to begin is So what I'm trying to begin is a forum for mayors to discuss these big topics. So again, stay tuned. Those are my communications. Staff, report please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I have just a couple brief communications. First, I wanted to give a shout out to our Field Services Streets Division and over the last month, significant amount of weed abatement work that they've been doing around town. The winter deluges have created significant weed growth. As we all know, you can just walk down the street and hear the weed whackers going everywhere, you know, all the time, it seems like. But the Streets Division has been out doing weed abatement along Oceana, Francisco, Lundy, Valmar, the islands on Fassler and Highway 1, Terra Nova, Odstad, and Rosita. They've also been out doing a lot of sand cleanup along Lindemar Beach, and all in preparation as well for the 4th of July, and the topic of fire protection was brought up earlier, so this is important work in advance of the 4th of July. So shout out to the crews for the many weeks of significant work on that front. The question was asked relating to fireworks about citations in the recent county ordinance. So we are looking into this, but counties have different citation authorities than cities do under state law, so our current understanding is that we don't have that same authority, but we're going to look further into it and see if perhaps any state law has changed that we were not aware of that would allow that. And of course, if the city attorney would like to elaborate on that, she is welcome to. But lastly, I wanted to thank Pacifica Resource Center Executive Director Anita Reese for bringing up the topic of the Temporary Safe Parking Program and for Councilmember Beer commenting on it, because I also wanted to come on it, comment on it. We are working in close collaboration with the PRC to make these sites safer for the participating clients, including lighting at one of the sites that we recently installed. But what I did want to echo is the phrase that was used because in Pacifica, this has been a longstanding mantra of the Pacifica Police Department, which is, see something, say something. The police department wants to know, regardless of whether someone thinks it's a significant issue or not, they want, they would rather get the call and know and be aware of the information than not. So when it comes to harassment type of activity or bothering people for anything, but in this case, for a city program, or it could be a group of kids in a park where something occurs, it doesn't matter, the police department wants to know. And in this case, there is some activity that's happening related to these designated spots, and the police department wants to know, the city wants to know, PRC wants to know. So I want to echo for the viewing audience out there that, see something, say something. Don't hesitate to call the police department to let them know what you observed, when you observed it. And I'll also add, please do it immediately and not later on or the next day, or don't post it on Nextdoor, because that doesn't help the response activity that's necessary for the police department to work on the enforcement aspects of this. That's all I'd want to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Sarasoo, I see you stood up as Kevin began speaking on that. Did you want to add anything? Thank you.
Maria Sarasoo, I'm your police chief, and I appreciate the conversation. I'm really disturbed by what I'm hearing about, and we are going to be resourceful. This light that he had mentioned also will be accompanied by situational awareness cameras. And this behavior not only won't be tolerated, but we have a wonderful relationship with our district attorney's office, which would be more than happy to take punitive action for any crimes that occur at the TSPP properties.
I think as I went into my communications, I, you know, made a passive aggression, aggressive allusion to bullies the world over. The comments of Councilmember Beer are well taken, that these folks, in this certain way, have been put more vulnerable by the actions of this council. And that was a conclusion of our action based off of years of really rather painful process to come to the conclusion that that was the best possible decision we could make within the context of it being a decision we were really super reluctant to make. There is nobody in that program who is not there wanting not to be living in their RV. There is a date certain when this program will end, and in the meantime, while we wait for that time to come, these are people who are trying actively not to have to live in their vehicle. That's why they are there. In general, bullying speaks volumes about the person who is committing the act. In this specific instance, it is an act committed upon people who are known to be trying to better their circumstance in life, and it speaks all the more loudly of the folk who then are trying to hold down and make harder people who are trying to better their circumstance. Mayor Protem.
Sorry, but this is positive.
That's not something to apologize for.
Well, I know it's coming after a heavy conversation, and I wanted to remind everyone that the Fog Fest, have a good time, get out, enjoy September 23rd and 24th. And we used to have something called a Fandango, and it was a big celebration the week before. We're having the Fog Cutters Ball, and that will be at the Moose Lodge on September 16th, the Saturday before Fog Fest, so everybody can come out and enjoy themselves indoors the week before, and have a good time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So this brings us to public hearings. Council, do we need a brief break? Okay, so let's reconvene at 9:10. exercise of powers agreement approving the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition rehabilitation improvement and equipping for the bluffs at Pacifica Apartments at 380 Esplanade Avenue, APN 009-131-060. Recommend California Environmental Quality Act SEQA status, general rule exemption, SEQA guidelines, Section 15061B3. Proposed action, conduct the public hearing under the requirements of Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended the code, and adopt the attached resolution authorizing and directing execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority and approving the issuance of qualified 501(c)(3) bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition rehabilitation improvement and equipping of the bluffs at Pacifica Apartments at 380 Esplanade Avenue, APN 009-131-060, and certain other matters thereto, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name's Stephanie Cervantes, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. The item before you this evening is a request to conduct a public hearing under the requirements of the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, also known as TFR, and the Internal Revenue Code, and to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing execution of the joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, and approving issuance of the tax-exempt revenue bond in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million for the purposes of financing or refinancing rehabilitation and improving and equipping the bluffs at Pacifica Apartments located at 380 Esplanade Avenue. The entity Integrity Housing has selected CMFA to be the issuer of a tax-exempt bond to acquire, rehabilitate, and improve the existing multifamily site. The bluffs at Pacifica Apartments is made of 64 units, and 20% or 13% units will be converted to affordable housing and restricted to very low income levels. Under TFR and the Internal Revenue Code, a public hearing is required to provide reasonable opportunity for interested individuals to express their views on the proposed issuance of the bonds, the location and nature of the proposed project to be financed. Additionally, to authorize CMFA to serve as the issuers of the bonds, the city is required to become a member of CMFA, and the city's role is limited to assisting CMFA and Integrity Housing to meet required codes and regulations. Any affordable units proposed as part of the project and their management is part of the agreement between Integrity Housing and CMFA. Thank you. I am available for questions, and we also have representatives from CMFA and Integrity Housing here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. It's my understanding we also have Planning Director Murdock in Zoom form, if need be? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Bowles.
I'd like to hear a little bit from CMFA's representative, if you don't mind. This is the first time I've seen this kind of agreement, and just how you ensure in your agreement, the affordable units, whether they're deed-restricted for a certain amount of time, whether there's anything about evictions of existing tenants.
Yeah, so I'm Ben Barker with the California Municipal Finance Authority. We're the largest affordable housing bond issuer in the state of California. Randomly, I think this is the only city on the entire peninsula that is not a member of the CMFA, and it's just because it worked out that way. So, you know, we've done a lot of projects in the peninsula. So the CMFA, again, being the largest affordable housing issuer in the state, we have written the compliance manual, the regulatory agreement, everything that SIDLAC uses to ensure that there's, the bond affordability is met through the lifetime of the regulatory agreement. The CMFA also has 700-plus projects under compliance, and we have a compliance staff that ensures affordability and that the regulatory agreements monitored and complied with every year. In addition to the CMFA, we have no defaults on any of our projects. 100% of our affordable housing projects are in compliance.
Can you clarify the length of the term of the regulatory agreement?
Sure, 30 years is the length of the term.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Is a lot of, I'm confused because I can see that this property is for sale, and the amount it's for sale for, and the amount of the loan is quite a bit higher. And is it due to rehabilitation? Is that the reason why it's so much higher than the?
Yeah, so if you look at just a straight market rate sale, it's quite a bit different than a tax-exempt bond issuance. The reason is, is because when you do a bond issuance for the federal terms, there's a percentage of rehabilitation that needs to go into the project, so they have to rehab each unit. There has to be a certain dollar amount spent in each unit. They can't just offer market rate. Well, they are offering market rate, but the bonds that are issued are above market rate because they have to finance all the improvements, and then they have all the extra requirements to go along with tax-exempt financing.
Okay, and my main question is, are there many, many guarantees that we will have zero liability as far as this loan goes?
Yes, if you look in Section 4 and 5 of the resolution that's being approved tonight, it clearly states that the city has no liability, responsibility, or moral or fiscal obligations to the bonds. It states clearly that the CMFA is the sole issuer of the bonds, and that that's why the CMFA is being here tonight, so that this city does not participate in the bond issuance whatsoever. The city is clearly, is only being used to hold the public hearing tonight. It could be done at the county, it could be done at the state, but CMFA always likes to hold the public hearings in the most local jurisdiction possible.
Okay, I did read it. I just wanted to make you say it again.
No, no, I get it. I do this, I do it every Monday and Tuesday night of my life, so that's a very common question.
I have a question. When I was, came to the fiscal impact part of the staff report, there was this language that I took to be kind of thick around what the outcomes wind up being, and I was trying to super-simplify it because it's easier to, what I took it to mean is that as a result of this process, at some point, there's some amount of money unknown at this time that will wind up going to the city. Just, you know, telling us that that's the case is enough, but if you want to actually go through the process, because you go into foundation and how various nonprofits get money, and if you want to talk about the structure of how CMFA gets funded, and then how that money gets distributed, and how we wind up with some, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, so the CMFA is funded from our issuance fees, and so there's a number of JPAs that are large JPAs in the state. We're the only JPA that has kind of this give-back or fee-sharing program. So once the CMFA issues bonds, which we're coming to the city tonight for up to $50 million, it's probably going to be much lower than that, but you always have a not-to-exceed amount, and so we won't know the exact dollar amount until the bonds are actually issued. From there, the city receives 25% of our issuance fees, another 25% is discounted to the developer because they're doing nonprofit housing, and then an additional 10% is donated throughout the state to nonprofits anywhere in the state.
The issuance fees themselves, what, tell me about that. How much is it? What is it supposed to go toward?
So the issuance fee covers the CMFA's costs to issue the bonds. We're all registered municipal financial advisors, so we have to not only issue the bonds and go through the whole tax process, which is a fairly lengthy process compared to like a market rate loan, and then from there, we have costs for the next 30 years where we monitor the bonds. So roughly, the city's going to receive roughly between $10,000 and $15,000 of our issuance fee, and that should cover the staff's time of reviewing the project. And we do this because you're a member of the CMFA. There's 350-plus other cities and counties and special districts that are members of ours, so instead of CMFA just taking all the fees, we feel that it's best to share the fee with the most local municipality that holds the TFR to cover any costs that the city may have incurred by holding a public hearing.
Okay, that was the part that I wasn't understanding. Thank you for explaining that. That was very helpful. Council, do we have any other questions before going to public comment?
I have one more. Again, this is your business model, and it's not really any of our business, but I'm just curious how you look at your investment risk in terms, especially in terms of properties that might be on vulnerable sites.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do evaluate that. We have, like I said, 1,200-plus projects that have been issued. The CMFA has one or two defaults. that have been issued. The CMFA has one or two defaults, and that's because the city of San Francisco, there was a charter school that went out of business. It was a technical default, but all the bondholders were repaid, so it's not a true default. Skid Row Housing in LA is being taken over by the city of LA and a few nonprofit partners, so those are also kind of technical defaults, but not true defaults. So, we evaluate every project that comes to the CMFA quite thoroughly. We turn down tons of projects, and we do look at like the public benefit of the project. In this case, this is meeting the federal affordability limits, and we're able to produce 20% of the project, which is currently market-rate, to put this under affordable regulatory agreement for the next 30 years.
It's really exciting. Thank you.
I like it.
Any other questions? And I'll open the public hearing now and invite public comments. I don't have any cards, but if anyone from the audience would like to speak, you're welcome to. Emily, do we have anyone on the lines?
We have one raised hand.
And I've noticed that I don't see the information I usually do about calling. I'm not sure if there are folks who otherwise might want to call in, but they...
Like the phone number?
Yeah, the phone number and all that. So, if we have that slide, I'd welcome it. In the meantime, there we go. So, if you're watching at home, you can dial in at 669-900-6833, webinar ID 811-5615-8241-pound. Please press *9 to raise your hand. When called upon by your screen name or the last four digits of your phone number, you'll press *6 to unmute, or press the unmute button on your screen, and then please state your full name for the record at the start of your comment, and I will let you know when you have one minute remaining of your three minutes to speak. Emily, who do we have so far?
We have two raised hands now. The first is Suzanne Moore.
Suzanne Moore, go ahead and unmute, and please state your name for the record.
Thanks, Tiger. Suzanne Moore from The Manor. And this sounds so exciting that I find myself thinking, what are the catches? And I know I shouldn't be thinking that way, because anytime we're talking about the potential for housing, especially for very low income, you know, just color me being on board. But, you know, I was trying to figure out how this can work, especially if the borrower should go bankrupt, or if the building becomes uninhabitable, because it's right on the coast. And I just wondered if there would be anything at all that Pacifica would have to be responsible for. Thank you for clarifying. That's a 30-year deed restriction. I wondered that question, too. So, thank you, Councilmember Bowles. And then, Councilmember Bowles also suggested, what's going to happen with the current tenants? Will they receive any reimbursement? Will they be offered compensation for moving costs? Will they be given the first right of return? And then, I thought I heard the explanation that, Mayor, you brought up about monies coming into the city's general fund. And I was thinking that since this was meant for housing, could this money be specifically designated for our housing fund? So, those are the questions that crossed my mind, and thank you all for being there this evening.
Thank you, Suzanne. Emily, who do we have next?
The next raised hand is Kimberly Williams.
Kimberly Williams, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Big Stick and councilmembers. This is Kimberly Williams, representing Samhita County, chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. While Surf Rider wholeheartedly supports affordable housing, and especially housing that prioritizes affordable units over market-rate units, we want to express concern that this project will put people in a high-risk area and in harm's way. How much money will be spent to protect and repair, and ultimately demolish this structure when the situation arises as a result of sea-level rise and more intense storm seasons, and this structure needs to be retired? My question would be, how does this project, or does this project, have a plan to retire the structure, and how will these costs be covered if it does end up needing to be retired at the cliff's edge? Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
And seeing nobody else in the audience to speak, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further questions and deliberation. I can start with some of the questions posed by the community. There was a general question. Are there any catches? And as I was reading, and I saw that we'll have housing designated specifically for very low affordable housing, which is the 50% median level and below, I got very excited by that, because that like doesn't happen in Pacifica. So, should you tell me why I should be concerned?
There's no catches. I don't know what to add, other than that.
I'll follow up on some of her other questions. If the borrower goes bankrupt...
Sure. If the borrower goes bankrupt, effectively, the process is the city is not on the hook again. It doesn't affect the city's bonding capacity. The city is not liable fiscally or morally to repay the bonds. What would happen is if the developer, for some reason, went bankrupt, and we've done a number of deals with, the bank would take over the property, and there's already going to be a property management onsite. They'd be retained, and they'd bring in a new asset manager to run the affordable housing project. But again, CMFA's never gone through that process with the 700-plus projects we've done.
And thank you for triple underlying that it's safe on that level. Perhaps Councilmember Bowles will follow up later, but what about current tenants?
So, there is a three-year window to self-certify the residents, and they don't have to be certified if they don't want to, but any of the residents that want to income-certify, they'll go through a process. If they're below the 50% AMI, then their rent will then be reduced to those levels. So, tenants won't be displaced through natural attrition. Tenants move in and out of apartment complexes. The average life is, I think, in this area is 4.2 years, give or take, different areas, but through attrition, people would move out naturally. And then, the tenants that meet the income verifications would receive a reduction of their rent.
And for the units that aren't very low?
They remain the same.
And...
And that's how we pay for the project, is the units remain the same price as they currently are. They're not affected in any way. The loan that the developer is getting compared to a market-rate loan, interest is much lower, and the maturity goes out further than a regular mortgage would be, and so that's how you're able to subsidize the rent.
And should a tenant need to be temporarily displaced due to rehabilitation, will they get the first right to return?
Yes. So, all of the units, I believe, are going to be rehabbed, and there will be a rehab plan when this project gets a little bit further down the process. This is the very beginning process of the financing stage, but there will be a rehab plan in place as the tenants, as their units get rehabbed.
So, the tenants are accounted for?
Yes, sure.
Okay. And then, the concern I heard expressed by both speakers had to do with the location of the project itself, because we have had a substantial amount of bluff erosion in that area and that neighborhood. And what can you tell us about the concerns that are expressed by our community, that it's wholly conceivable that that complex is destined for the ocean?
Sure. So, this project will be fully insured under the bond terms, the bond purchasers. That's one of the first requirements in these type of areas, is that there's full insurance on the project. If something catastrophic happened, insurance would kick in, and that would fix the project up, or if it was gone, the bonds would be retired, and insurance would pay back the bondholders. It's similar to like Santa Clarita area with a lot of the fires that went through, and some of the Northern California projects that had just consistent fires, where projects have burned down. Insurance terms are expensive for this type of area, but that's fully baked into the financing of the project.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those were the questions I heard come from the community. Questions from council or deliberation for that matter. Councilmember Bowles.
Just to follow up on a couple of things. Would your insurance also, in the event of bankruptcy, cover demolition of the buildings if needed? We have had to demolish apartment buildings, you know, further north, but...
If there is a bankruptcy.
And with sea-level rise, bluff erosion, if...
Yeah. The projects have to be insured for catastrophic losses and things like that. So, if something happened, they would...The insurance would repay the bondholders, and it would wipe out the building. So, it wouldn't leave it like frames or, you know, sticks in frames and stuff.
Okay. So, it would be removed...
Yeah.
If need be, as part of...Okay. And then, this wasn't asked, but we've had some issues in the last couple of years with more and more rental units being converted to short-term rentals, and I'm just wondering if, is there a prohibition of that?
It's clearly throughout the bond documents. There's no short-term rentals.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions, deliberation, motions? Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let me put my glasses on. I'm moved to adopt the attached resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority and approving the issuance of qualified 501(c)(3) bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition, rehabilitation, improvement, and equipping of the bluffs at Pacifica Apartments at 380 Esplanade Avenue, and certain other matters thereto, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further deliberation, please vote.
And for item number six, with the motion made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer, the vote passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, we're going to come back to public hearings after our consideration item number eight, the disbanding of current library advisory committee membership, resolution of amending the library advisory committee, and recruitment of the new committees. We have a staff report, please.
Mayor and councilmembers present the item regarding the disbanding of the current library advisory committee and amending the library advisory committee with recruitment for the new committee. On March 27 and April 10 of this year, the council discussed and approved a process for reviewing the charters for council-appointed commissions and committees. And that would start with the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee and the Library Advisory Committee. So, this effort is in conjunction with the council's direction to review the committee charter. The library advisory committee was formed, was approved for formation by council in January of 2016, and recruited for and met in July, for the first time in July of 2016. The library advisory committee was born out of a city library and library foundation liaison committee that previously existed to discuss the Pacifica new library project, which was envisioned to replace the Sharp Park Library with a new library. The library advisory committee was formed for the purpose of increasing project transparency by holding meetings open to the community and in compliance with the Brown Act requirements, assisting city staff by providing feedback on various elements of the project, such as project priorities, direction, and selection of professional consultants as needed during the project, and to facilitate communication between the city and the community in various ways, including engaging in public outreach to solicit feedback and opinions on the library project. The library advisory committee was formed as a 14-body committee with membership consisting of two categories. One category was member stakeholders that were appointed by other bodies. The stakeholder groups were the Planning Commission, Economic Development Committee, Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, Pacifica Library Foundation, Pacifica Friends of the Library, Chamber of Commerce, Pacifica School District, Jefferson School District, and a citizens' bond oversight committee, which would be appointed following successful passage of a bond measure for construction of the new library project. The second category of members were at-large community members, which would be appointed by council. Those were five positions and covered a range of families with children, seniors, a Sharp Park resident, service organizations, and environmental organizations. The library advisory committee also has two city council liaisons, and at the time, there were no membership terms that were imposed on the library advisory committee as it was formed, as a committee that would disband at the following completion of the purpose of that committee, which was envisioned to complete its purpose following passage of a bond for construction of the library and by one year following construction of the library. A bond measure was presented to the Pacifica voters in November of 2016. It failed to reach the supermajority of two-thirds vote. It did receive a majority vote, but not the two-thirds vote required for a general obligation bond measure. However, the library advisory committee continued its work following the unsuccessful bond measure, and accomplished some key accomplishments in the project following the bond measure. That included working on a conceptual design with encouraging feedback from the community and for input on the conceptual design for the Sharp Park Library, and also recommending to council, following the bond measure that did not pass, a two-branch library system rather than replacing the two libraries with one single library, which was envisioned in the 2016 bond measure. Heard the community that they valued the two-branch system, and retained feedback from the community and the stakeholders to discuss a two-branch system with the Sanchez Library being an open-access model and an operational model in partnership with the PBNR Department and library services. So, in 2019, the conceptual design was presented to council, and the council approved the conceptual design for the Sharp Park and Sanchez Libraries with extensive community engagement that was done through the library advisory Most recently, in September, October of 2019, the city partnered with Berg Davis for Citizen Outreach and Communications, together with input from the library advisory committee to develop project FAQs and tabling of events to outreach regarding the conceptual designs for the two library system. Then COVID happened, and the library advisory committee last convened in person in January of 2020. During COVID, library advisory committee went on hiatus, and we're discussing now how to reconvene the library advisory committee with recommendations to restructure that committee. On numerous occasions, while the library advisory committee was meeting in person, there were issues with establishing a quorum, and many meetings needed to be canceled due to lack of quorum. That, in part, was for a few reasons. One is that there were a few stakeholder positions that were identified that were never filled. One was a position for the bond oversight committee. Because the bond didn't pass, there was never a bond oversight committee formed, and so no representative for that. The Chamber of Commerce never appointed a representative for that stakeholder position, and there were often meeting conflicts between the regular meeting date of the library advisory committee and either of the... committee and either of the school board members, and also occasional difficulties with other members that were unable to attend. So, what the recommendation here is to look at restructuring the committee to be a committee that is similar in structure to other city committees and commissions. The recommendation is to make the committee a seven-member committee of at-large council-appointed members that could be representatives from the community and the various stakeholder groups as members of the community. And then also to restructure the library committee as far as the council liaison, where to be similar to other committees that have council liaisons, where there would be one primary council liaison and one alternate liaison. The purpose of the committee will remain similar to the initial established purpose of the committee that is reflected in the proposed resolution and the exhibit attached to the proposed resolution. And with that, I welcome any council questions.
Thank you, Clerk Coffey. One of our residents had a question about just finding the commission and committee handbook for their own edification. Can you tell us where to find that, where the public can find that?
The, the committee and commission handbook applies to all city committees and commissions. It is publicly posted on the city's website, on the commissions and committees webpage.
Thank you very much. And staff's recommendation effectively is to cut the committee in half?
For, for the allocated positions, but some of those positions never had a representative filled, so it effectively is not quite cutting the committee in half.
You can't cut in half what was never whole to begin with. Okay, just, it'll inform some of the deliberations I bring up later. Councilmember Beer?
So, I know that there was questions sent in about this already, but is it possible for us to have youth seats on the advisory board?
Yes, the, the council can discuss and deliberate on whether they would like youth seats and how those should be designated, either as, you know, a full voting member, and, and then also from, you know, whether it's a council-appointed position or an ex officio non-voting position that's just providing input or receiving, you know, attending regularly and getting information. But one, one thing that I would like to highlight is looking at and discussing structuring the committee so that we do have success in achieving quorum and not putting ourselves in a position where the structure leads to a lack of quorum issues.
Thank you, Sarah.
Any other questions? I have plenty of deliberation, but no questions. Shall we go to public comment, then? I have no cards in front of me. I don't see anyone leaping up from the chairs, all three of you. Emily, do we have anyone on the phone lines?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. I'll give it an extra few seconds. So, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation. Mary, I was the other one who asked that question, and it occurred to me it would be charming to have a representative of each high school and make them as non-voting representatives. What do you?
Well, I'll always advocate for voting, voting seats for young people, so that would, that would just be my said. But I would really like to hear from Councilmember Beckmeyer about your thoughts about this in general, because I value your opinion.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I think switching to this format is a good idea. I think that I certainly attended many meetings and was a witness to the lack of quorum issue, and I personally tried to work out something to have the school district be represented, and it just kept not working because of the, the rolling nature of their board meetings every three weeks. It kept landing on the same day, and na, na, na. It was, it was a lot of challenge. So, while I appreciate the thinking that went into the structure of this in 2016, I think that what could move forward is keeping the need to inform and connect with these different groups in the forefront of the committee's work. So, there's nothing to prevent a, a committee from deciding amongst themselves who would be designated, or who would volunteer to reach out to so-and-so group, or, oh, I'm on the, you know, chamber board, I'll make sure that they're aware of everything. And, and to have that kind of cross-pollination, or whatever you want to call it, that was what I understood thinking to be, and to be inclusive, and to make sure that all sectors of the community had an opportunity to be involved and know about the library. And inform, because a lot of decisions were made around design and such that needed to take all of those things into consideration. You mentioned earlier tonight about lack of quorum. I've certainly been experiencing this within CCA committee, the one committee I'm on, and I've heard them talk about challenges with achieving quorum, and it seems largely to do with the lifting of the emergency order and the fact that people suddenly can't do it on Zoom, or not suddenly, but no longer can attend meetings on Zoom. So, anything we can do to help our committee be strong and therefore be functional, I'm for. I think we know that the old structure wasn't working. So, personally, that's, you know, I support the idea of doing the structure the way we are. I questioned in my mind, not really out loud, having one council member and then an alternate versus the two that we had originally had. I kept in my mind, I guess I thought we were going to still have two. But I think that's reasonable, given the amount of committees that we're all covering all the time. And in fact, I think this particular committee meets at the same time as another one, but I'm not sure if that's true. Anyway, so we just have to-
We can make the time, because it's a new committee.
Right. Well, true, well, and I remember when I went through it, asking, well, couldn't we do it this day? Well, couldn't we do it that day? And it turned out, no. The answer was no, about 85% of the time, because this calendar's so full with all of the meetings that we already have. So, anyway, that, is that a good answer? Do you, or do you need more?
No. Okay. I don't.
Oh, but I do want to touch on the, the youth piece.
Yeah.
I agree, I would like them to be a voting member, but I wonder, how do we manage? We had this conversation in regard to something else, and I remember we asked Director Palacio his advice and thoughts. And we were talking about the Youth Services Bureau, and we were talking about a lot of things. Youth advisory, sorry. And so, I don't, I mean, students have a lot going on in their lives, and meetings in the evening are not always going to be possible for students. I don't want, there not to be a quorum. I don't want students who are, this is going to be their first, maybe, possibly, real opportunity to participate. I don't want it to become a punitive thing, so I don't know if there's an ex officio, or, I mean, no, because ex officio is not voting. I don't know. I would defer to anyone who has a thought on how to encourage and, and incorporate student involvement and not have the committee's functioning hinge on it. I think that's my challenge. I don't want to put too much pressure on the youth.
Mayor, I, I may offer a couple thoughts regarding the youth component to the library advisor committee. It might be that the conversation about this topic that was being remembered was related to the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan and a discussion of youth involvement in that. And council members may remember better than I, but I believe that perhaps it was that there wasn't a designated position, but related to youth, but youth are encouraged to apply, right? So, that could be the case with the members of the library advisory committee. I think one of the conversations we had related to that was also that Director Palacio is going to be working and his staff to engage the youth advisory board more in civic issues that the council is taking up. That's not traditionally been what they've addressed in the past, but the future of libraries in Pacifica is an excellent topic for the entire youth advisory board to engage on and be active in. And I think to the point that was made about the, the role of the seven members is to outreach to all groups. And so, certainly, youth in schools is one of those very important groups to, to help amplify the message about the need for the libraries and have their involvement, and certainly input, specific input at certain milestones in the, in the process. Yet to be determined what those milestones are, but I think, you know, Director Palacio and his staff could work with the YAB to instigate that with the YAB. And the, the, you know, the council could certainly decide to designate one position that should be for a youth, but then, but then you're faced with, well, what if, you know, there are no candidates that come forward to that, and then you're short one position. So, I think it's, the way it's generally, you know, recommended now is, is you could sort of put a preference on, we really want a youth person involved in this, so please apply, but it's not a designated position. And, and I, and I think the point being that was mentioned about, is this a voting position or not? You know, if you, if it's not going to be a voting position, then what's the difference between that and just encouraging youth members to attend the meetings? So, to think, to think about that. So, I, I outlined sort of several options for consideration, but-
May I just add one point for consideration? In the new structure, we're looking at creating a new library, structure of library advisory committee with expiration terms as well, which wasn't imposed previously. So, similar to other committees and commissions, four-year terms with the initial appointment of, if we're appointing seven council-appointed members, the first three appointed for an initial two-year term, and then the remaining four for a four-year term. Bringing up the issue of discussion of youth members, the, the terms may become an issue where they may, you know, they may resign, and then we just recruit for that vacancy, which is not an issue, but just bringing up the, the discussion of terms, in terms of youth involvement as well.
So, one thought I had, your point as well taken a while, why I asked to begin with about the numbers. It occurred to me that with the Measure Y oversight, one of the solutions was to designate a range of potential we could appoint. In that way, if we had applicants from another stakeholder group, so to speak, we could have wiggle room to say, oh, well, we said seven, but we have a range of seven to nine or whatever, and so, we really like this person, we can appoint them also. We could perhaps, and I'll have to double-check, but designate that we'd like to have a space available for a voting member of youth. But then if one doesn't apply, then it doesn't put a kibosh on a firm number because we selected a range. And the other thing that occurred to me as I was listening is I was thinking that ex officio might be a way to address youth if we were to have one from Ternova, one from Oceana. And I'm not sticking to that, because I'm, I'm hearing better solutions to that. But it could be that as we're thinking in terms of, well, we're reducing it from 14 to seven, but we surely would love the feedback of these other folk, it might be nice to have ex officio designations from these various committees and commissions that could show up and then could have whatever time to speak they'd like when the time comes and not just be limited to the three minutes, but they're not voting members. And so, ex officio could actually be a solution to enabling more feedback. And then, we could also potentially designate a range rather than a firm number of seven. So, these are, Councilmember Beer, did you have more before?
I do, yeah. So, in my experience with youth councils, one seat is never, they like to come in pairs. They just don't like to do things by themselves. So, if we're going to have a seat, it would be nice to have two seats. We might want to ask the youth advisory board what they think about how these seats should be structured. And maybe that kind of information could help us when we decide what the youth seats could look like. And this could be a beautiful beginning of having youth seats on all of our committee and commissions, but I think we should ask the youth advisory board. I don't know how you feel about that, Bob, but it's always good to hear from, directly from our young people about what they think they would like to see.
Bob Palacio, Director, PBNR. So, I, I agree, I think we can do that, no problem. I think that would be something that they would enjoy talking about and giving input about. I think whichever way we end up going, it will be important to have that youth voice in that committee somehow, as we can all agree. Because what you don't want to do is, you know, my concept of what a library is, and I'm sure your concept are all very similar, but if you want a forward-thinking sort of, you know, state-of-the-art, service-providing library, you've got to go to the teenagers. Their, you know, their concept of what a library is will be much different than ours, and the services that it can potentially provide. So, I'll talk with, with Lexi and our staff. We'll go to the youth advisory board, we'll ask them about what they think about, hey, you know, is that too big of a commitment? Is that, you know, a commitment that you all would feel that people would be interested in, those type things? Give you some feedback, and then hopefully that'll help you to make the best decision.
Counsel?
Can do that.
I like that idea. I need to understand timelines in terms of tonight's, what's before us tonight, because I know we have work that needs to be getting underway. So, I'm kind of wondering about a hybrid of increasing the range, seven to nine, to add for two, to allow for two, not one, as one possibility of, and a way to amend this that leaves room for the designation of two seats for youth, if we want to. I do like what the city manager said about encouraging youth to apply, because what if we had more than two? What if we had three? You know, I don't know. The other thing I wondered about is if we had youth positions, can we create, this is really probably a city attorney question, can we create a committee or commission that has terms as the city clerk outlined, but if we designate youth positions, can they have a shorter term?
They would need to.
Right? Can we do youth position, except for the youth roles, which are one-to-two-year commitments, something like that?
You know, however the council wants to formulate the committee, they can do. The, the key is going to be to make it clear at the outset, so people's expectations are managed and met. So, if the council wants to have a youth position whose term is one year or two years, that, that can be, and then at, an at-large member that will have, you know, a four-year term, and then a council member who will have a one-year term, I mean, the configuration can be however the council will designate. And tonight, in order to keep the process moving, we can, you know, put in parameters in terms of what you want potentially, but you don't have to designate what, how, what the number of the committee would be, and then ask staff to, you know, by, even by motion, you don't even need to put it in the resolution to be, to have, you know, the park and rec director to reach out to the youth group to get their input, so that when this comes back for the council determination on the appointments, you will have all that information in the staff report and deal with it all at that point, so that there isn't a delay in getting all of this information before the council can move forward-
Right.
-with actually making the appointments, and before the clerk can move forward with, you know, interviewing and recruiting. Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
And if I could add, just in regards to the timeline, so one of the reasons we expedited this to bring it tonight is so that we can start the recruitment process and have, hopefully, a committee appointed later in summer so that the committee is formed and beginning their work in a time that aligns with the city and- their work in a time that aligns with the city and San Mateo County Libraries' grand opening ribbon-cutting of the remote kiosk and services that are going to be provided at Sanchez Library this fall, later this fall. And so I guess that's the urgency about getting the recruitment process going. So I think to what the city attorney is saying, if the council's interested in a flexible range, seven to nine, we've done that on the other, on another committee. Again, I don't know if it was a cap. And so, you know, if you get nine great applicants or 15 great applicants, you know, depending on the review, you can decide to appoint nine. You can also state in the material that there's a preference for youth representatives to apply. You can be as specific or general as you want about that, but I guess my only caution would be if you specifically hold spots for youth, then you're locked into that. But you could, you know, and I, again, going, yeah. So the more broad you are in the recruitment, that's good. You can do work and specify encouraging youth participation. And then somehow we can figure out tonight, if you wanted to, a flexible term for youth representatives. So sometimes the way that works is when you're representing a specific stakeholder group, it's not the person, it's the position representing that group. So whether it was the Youth Advisory Board or the high school district, you know, a student in the high school district, then the person that's participating could be there for one academic year, nine months, and then another one comes in. So it's not the person, it's that the high school district has the position and they appoint. It's similar to the way council members represent on other bodies, right? Where it's a city council representative, not a particular council member. Does that make sense? So that's maybe a way, I'm just thinking out of the box about, a way to structure that.
And just to, if I might, just clarify, with that general direction, if that were the desire of the council, that could happen tonight and we would slightly have to revise the resolution and then Exhibit A, which is the duties of the committee and chair. Very simple to do if you keep it in broad terms. I also would not recommend that you actually deliberate and discuss what the term should be tonight. That should occur at the time that you make the appointments. So, and plus, it would be much less revisions to the resolution and the Exhibit A tonight. We could, you know, simply make a revision to the resolution that said that the committee to a potentially seven-to-nine-member body, that's all we need to change in the resolution. And then in the Exhibit A, we would just need to add, member to the membership, members shall be selected to represent the following segments of the community, and we could include youth organizations in there if you'd like to consider that or not. But those were the only changes that I saw needed, if in fact the council wanted to go in this more general direction of allowing staff to sort of do some investigation, but being able to move into youth involvement, but still able to move forward with beginning the recruitment and then bringing back at another meeting, most likely in August, perhaps the second meeting in August would be my guess, the actual appointments and then a more in-depth discussion on the terms. And it would all be dependent upon who your potential appointments will be.
We need to, I understand what you're saying about, we don't want to get into a big conversation about deliberating the terms, but would it need to be broad enough to, or amended to be broad enough to let there be a one-year term?
There's, I don't see, unless the clerk, I don't see any mention of the exact specifics about terms in Exhibit A yet.
Okay.
So we would have to be creating it, which is one reason why I'm saying, let's not create it if it hasn't been created yet.
Okay.
Let's create it, which I would assume was the intent when the city clerk put this project, put this item together, that the terms would be discussed at the time of the appointments.
So we would just need, that being the case, we would just need, because in terms of our work process, when we make appointments, that's disclosed when the thing is advertised. People know they're applying for, you know, there's two, one, you know, two-term seats and three, four-term seats or whatever. So when people are applying, they know generally that information. Is that not true?
That's a question for the clerk.
So the proposal for the terms is discussed in the staff report, is not included in the resolution or the exhibit at this time, but can easily be amended to include that now or waiting until?
I'm not admitting that we don't do that.
The city attorney stated to revisit that when the appointments are made.
But the question really is, Madam Clerk, what is your norm, how do your appointees, when you're recruiting, how do they know what they're applying for? Is it general? Or do you always recruit for a two-year term or a four-year term, depending upon the term?
For, typically for city committees and commissions, we do state the, you know, a partial term to expire a month and year or a full four-year term. For the recruitments that we have done for vacancies on the Library Advisory Committee, we were silent on the exact duration of the term because it was unspecified.
And it may be that Mary and I, being the ad hoc to concoct questions, might include in some of the questions we ask the interviewees, would you be comfortable with indeterminate length of time between one year and four years? Or it might be that we make the questions contingent on, well, if the one year is specific to youth, that'll be a question we ask youth specifically. And so we can, it sounds like, develop those questions and those terms in real time at the behest of council, if we keep it general at this time.
And I do think that even if the council keeps the term length out of this resolution in Exhibit A, the clerk can still recruit and advertise as, generally terms are four years, although they could be shorter, so that people will be aware, it won't be longer than four years, but it could be shorter.
Give some parameters around it.
Correct.
And then the other thing that occurred to me, it's not, well, maybe it is addressed here and I missed it, but when we talked about the cap, we recognized that we were going to have to stagger because we didn't want everybody to have to get replaced at the same time. So those nuances and specifics would come later as well. So that's a good point.
And I do note on packet page 632, it says, members shall be over 18 years of age. And so I don't know if that needs to, I don't know if it's in the resolution, sorry, I didn't see that in the resolution, but if it is, I just noticed that that might need to change.
Oh, is it in the resolution?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's in the...
It's on packet page...
629 also.
629, okay.
Oh, 630.
The original had it, but then...
And then I also just wanted to make sure that we are going to actually collect some information from the Youth Advisory Board.
Yeah.
About like terms, meeting times, responsibilities, things like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So...
So we changed...
Well, Councilmember Bowles has had her light on the entire discussion. So I appreciate that we're kind of slipstreaming and having this discussion. Do you have a separate topic or shall we continue deliberating on the...
I was going to talk about that topic too, but I'm in agreement with what I'm hearing. My only concern is if we're advertising for four years, that might put off some youth. So, I mean, he'll be talking to the Youth Advisory Group, but that's not necessarily reaching all of our youth.
Mayor, if I may, an idea occurred to me, so I'll just throw it out there. So council could set forth the general term, seven to nine, whatever the size is. I think it would be good to establish in that general direction, but not, we don't have to put it in the resolution, but the staggering of terms and consistent with our other commissions and committees, two and four-year, this committee may not be in operation for that long. We don't know the future of, you know, a bond measure, et cetera. However, when it comes to expressing a preference for youth participation, the way we could conduct the recruitment, and it wouldn't have to be built into the resolution, is to say, if you are a youth applying to this committee, please tell us in your application what length of service you would be interested in providing. And so I think everyone would recognize that, you know, a youth who's, I'm really interested in this, but I'm a senior in high school and I don't know where I'm going to be next summer, so nine months. And they would express that. And council during interviews and selection could take that into consideration and then make the appointments accordingly with a term for nine months for that position. And so it would just leave it open, I think, the process. And I'll turn to the city attorney, does that sound like a flexible way to approach that? And you could have two different youth or four that apply and they each say, hey, I'm around, you know, I'd like to be here two years working on this, something like that, that's flexible.
And it seems like as we do recruitment, the way we recruit youth might be different than the way we recruit at large, if we're recruiting specifically in the high school or through the Youth Advisory. Mayor Protam?
I agree. One of the biggest problems I see is that we have these specific planning commissioner, economic development, and that's why we don't have a quorum. Because those people are not invested in the library as some of the other people would be. So I could see it more being an at-large group instead of trying to appoint these specific people.
Well, the recommendation is that it's seven members at large.
Just all at large, right.
And then the exhibit just lists that, you know, that members will be selected to represent the following segments of the community. It lists some, members may also be selected from other key stakeholder groups, it lists some of those, but it's not saying that they have to be those.
They have to, like in the...
The old committee, yeah, was a designated person from that stakeholder group, and that's what created the quorum council.
Yeah, that's what had, yes, I was the liaison also.
I still think it might be an interesting exercise to hold ex officio spots open for various stakeholder groups without necessitating they be present for quorum. Councilmember Bowles, thank you for your patience.
No, that's fine. And that's exactly what I want to talk about. But back to the youth for a minute. Bob Palacio was saying how their voices are so important for making sure we have a library that serves the future, right? That we have a certain image. I'm not clear on this, like how much room there is for discussing those kinds of things in the design at this point, because I was told the design is pretty much set, we've had all this community input. So if we're bringing in the youth and want their voices, I just want to make sure that there's really an opportunity that we can incorporate those things.
I think there might be a different conversation between a design and services.
Okay, but they go together if you need certain spaces.
I mean, yeah.
My, I haven't looked at the design in a long time.
And I haven't at all, and I'd really like to.
Oh, we got to meet.
Oh, yeah.
So my recollection of the layout as proposed is there's a lot of flexibility in there. There are some bigger designated spaces and smaller designated spaces, what exactly you do with them. And in fact, one of the ones that was, I don't even know if it was dubbed a maker space specifically, but it was intended to be a flexible space for such purposes. So that would be the input on what to do with that space is what I'm thinking, to echo what...
Yeah, and then also that can be something that the feedback that we get from the Youth Advisory Board will tell us, like, what are you interested in talking about? Like, you know what I mean?
But these are conceptual design, there's still design development and so forth. So, I mean, the process is going to continue to flush out the library in detail after we know that we have some money in the community support to build it.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Well, I'd love to meet with you and we can go over plans.
Yes.
So the other point about the ex officio members that were there before, I mean, I think some of these are really important. And I, I mean, just like the Emergency Preparedness Committee has someone from the Red Cross, I mean, their name is there, they're invited to all the meetings, they come sometimes and they talk, they get all the minutes. So there's one person that, you know, we can go to if we have questions, you know, on that committee, and one person who's paying attention. And I'm just looking like the planning commissioner, you know, Parks, Speaks and Rec, that those seem like, you know, want to make sure that, I mean, I would think an ex officio, so they're not voting, they don't necessarily need to be there for the quorum, but that might be helpful. The other thing that I, and I don't know if this is in the plans, because I haven't seen the plans, but as part of this climate conference I went to, there was a great presentation by Bayren, and they're actually doing pilot programs right now, looking at libraries as community resilience centers. And so it becomes a place in a disaster, in high heat, in smoke, where, because most of our homes aren't equipped for these kind of events, a place that people can go. And it's already a place that's warm, they know, it's like their living room. And so like someone from the Emergency Preparedness Committee might be good, you know, as an ex officio too. And charging, like, we have some of that at the community center, but it would be wonderful to have something in Sharp Park so that everyone has a place they can walk to, you know, in a reasonable distance.
Those were designations that were made at some past disaster, fires or something with the libraries, the current libraries that we have, in addition to the community center.
Okay, great.
But yes, that was absolutely thought and discussed in the design.
Yeah, thanks.
We make a motion?
Well, let's talk about what do we need to amend. In my little paper on page 363, Exhibit A, I, I mean, 636, I'm tired. 636, I, under membership, I put seven to nine. I added, under members shall be selected to represent the following segments of the community, I added a little carrot that said youth, and that's all I did. I didn't do anything about ex officio. I didn't do anything about anything else.
We need to also change the resolution.
Which is on packet page...
634.
634.
So the last whereas clause would need to be changed as well as the resolve clause.
Right.
To seven to nine.
Seven to nine, seven to nine, got it.
On that packet page 636, where it says, members may also be selected from the following key stakeholder groups, there may be instead of not, well, keep that, but for members not selected from these key stakeholder groups, there will be an open ex officio assignment from these key stakeholder groups. Is how I would go at it.
That would need to be in the resolution, and you don't need to change Exhibit A, because you could make ex officio members whoever you wanted, but you would need to include that in the last whereas clause, in addition to, from seven to nine community members, as well as, and do you want to put a range or a number of ex officio members?
Would that satisfy it? You don't need to go specific about what groups those ex officio are from?
Do you want to specify which groups now? Because if you just leave it general and just say, we shall have three ex officio members or three to five ex officio members, then you can decide at the appointment who the ex officio members should be. So my recommendation is, unless you want to have that discussion now, when you don't have the potential appointees, it's probably, you may be having this discussion again once you get the appoint...
I like general and I, two, three, four, five, there's six listed here, I would say a range of five to seven might be appropriate. Just say...
And that which was cut in half is now made whole.
Wait, what did you say, six, what?
Well, so I was taking a cue from this list of six stakeholder groups, that those might be appropriate designations for ex officio members. So whether or not we get one from each, I don't know, but we could say... one from each, I don't know, but we could say simply, you know, we'll allow space for up to five to seven ex officio members.
I think that's a lot.
I do too.
I think it's too many.
I agree.
Quite frankly, I think if we had two ex officio
No, that's fine. Give me a different number.
Yeah, I think two would be enough. That's much my opinion.
Do you have
Because I think this is where we we had a rough time.
So it's not quorum?
Yeah. No, no, I get that. But it's still, it's hard for folks to show up when they're on other committee and commissions.
Right, and they don't need to. That's the point. I'm just saying we should allow space if any of them at any given point want to show up.
Cool.
There's a list of, you know, they can be there to speak to their heart's content and give feedback accordingly.
Got it.
What number do you think is appropriate?
Who, Beckmeyer, what do you think?
Well, you said five to seven or something?
I said five to seven.
I was thinking three to five. Three?
Three to five?
What do you think, Mary?
Yeah, that's fine.
Three?
Three. I mean, I think three's enough because we're just getting bigger and bigger.
Well, it just depends on what representation. I mean, I'm looking at this, I mean, I don't even know who the Pacifica Library Foundation is, the Pacifica Friends of the Library. They don't exist. Okay.
I mean, there might be several members who show up more regularly, but like with emergency preparedness, you have that member from the Red Cross who sometimes she shows up, sometimes she doesn't. Thinking, well, from Jefferson School District, sometimes someone will show up, sometimes they won't. But it's always good to have that spot open for them. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, three to five is good.
I would like to move to accept
Adopt.
The documents as amended.
Actually, we need to go back
I mean, adopt.
No, to the top of the staff report where it talks about recommendations. So the first action is going to be
Two.
Move to disband the current library advisory committee membership.
Oh, right. So we have to do that in two separate motions?
Yes.
Okay. So I move to disband the current library advisory committee.
Oh, you can do it in one motion. I
Oh, we can do it in one?
Yes, sorry, my, my apologies.
I move, I would like to make a motion to, one, move to to disband the current library advisory committee membership and to adopt the attached resolution titled the Resolution of the City Council, the City of Pacifica Rescinding Resolution Number 02-2016, and amending the Charter of the Library Advisory Committee as amended, and to direct the city clerk to begin recruitment process for the community at-large library advisory committee members.
And and just for clarity, that amendment to the resolution and Exhibit A to the resolution is that the last whereas clause clause will include, instead of seven community members, from seven to nine community members, as well as three to five ex officio members appointed by the city council and the non-voting members appointed by the city council, and the same change will be made to the resolve clause. With regard to the Exhibit A, the membership paragraph will be revised to, say, seven to nine at-large community members and three to five non-voting ex officio members, as well as a new A new organization added to the portion representing the following segments of the community, which will, which will state youth organizations.
Yes. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further deliberation, please vote.
And with the motion made by councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Mayor Protem Vardalas, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public hearing, item number seven, adoption of the fiscal year 2023-24 operating and capital budget. Proposed action to hold a public hearing, review, and move to adopt the following resolutions. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick and councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I want to be brief in some introductory comments and then turn it quickly over to Assistant City Manager Carter. What what I first want to do is acknowledge the amazing work that Ms. Carter and her staff and team, as well as the department directors from all the city departments have done in bringing together this budget, as well as to the council for the many hearings that we've had and the input and direction you've given. I want to be brief, and so the proposed budget always comes with a budget transmittal memorandum from the city manager, and it's about nine pages long. And it, I view it as a great sort of executive summary to the budget, but it hits on some pretty high-level observations about where the city financially is and what an important milestone this year's actual proposed budget is, in large part because of the successful passage by the voters of Measure Y in November. So we're faced happily with a budget that is not presenting a structural deficit to the city. And so it is really a critical milestone, and a lot of great work has gone into this. And what I'm very excited about with this budget for next fiscal year is that the council also undertook this significant strategic planning process. And while Measure Y enables us to maintain existing city services, and that was the focus of that measure, there are many items in here that we worked on to creatively utilize one-time dollars or limited-term dollars to fulfill the goals and strategies that the council identified. And so it represents a package looking forward that is starting to address some of the substantial challenges that we still have and not just close a structural deficit gap. And again, I won't read it verbatim or anything, but if you do look at that transmittal memo and in the last paragraph, sort of the conclusion and looking forward, we have, we do have significant challenges still ahead of us. We have, you know, the city is is very understaffed compared to other agencies. Our our salaries are much lower than median compared to other comparable agencies. We have significant capital projects that we don't have the bandwidth to fund. And so what we're excited about is working on all these challenges moving forward and figuring out how to make Pacifica financially sustainable for the long term. And that is captured in the council's strategic plan, from the mission, vision, and values to the strategy, to the goals and strategies, and to the staff, you know, detailed work plan in working forward to the future. So I've been here almost six years, and this is just of all the years, this is the biggest budgeting milestone yet in Pacifica that I've experienced in maybe in a long time in Pacifica's history. So I don't want to discount sort of the importance of that. So I do encourage the viewing public as well as the council to really look at the transmittal memo as well as the entire budget, and you'll hear a lot of the detail tonight from Ms. Carter. And that's my introductory comments about this. And again, thank you to Ms. Carter for all the incredible work and her team. And I think she's going to introduce them as well. Thanks.
Well, unfortunately, it's just me tonight, but I know Deputy Director Lucid Shea is probably watching online. So but I do want to acknowledge my team to, for working on this document. So it's been a very short turnaround and a lot of work was put into this. So thank you, city manager, for introductory comments. I want to jump straight to the recommendation that is before you today. You have three resolutions in your packets. So the first one is actually adopting the fiscal year 2324 annual operating and capital budget. Want to note that appropriation of 135,000 from Roy Davis Trust Fund towards the CIP project requires four out of the five votes, so that has to be called out separately. So the second resolution is establishing again appropriation limit for fiscal year 2324 as required by California Constitution. And finally, the last resolution is approving fiscal year 2324 investment policy, and we made no changes for the fiscal year 2324. I will be very brief in today's agenda. We had an in-depth discussion of the budget options at the last meeting. So tonight we will talk about budget highlights and overview, and we will bring it back to the recommendation to adopt. So again, very quickly, tonight we are finishing our budget process. And prior to tonight meeting, the city council held four public meetings related to the budget. And tonight we are presenting proposed fiscal year 2324 for a formal adoption. And before we go into details on the budget, just let's take a look at the highlights for the proposed budget. First and the most important point that we are bringing forward, the structurally balanced budget when operating revenues are compared to operating expenditures. General fund revenues projected at 48.9 million, which is almost 3.4 million percent above the revised budget. General fund expenditures projected at 48.6 million, and this is about 0.4 percent, only 0.4 percent above the revised budget. The expenditures include the one-time allocation of Measure Y revenues in the, from the current fiscal year towards the streets resurfacing project in the CIP. Again, we've discussed it in the previous meetings. And the difference between the revenues and expenditures create a surplus of about 334,000 that will be used towards the new cost of labor agreements once they in place. And we will have to bring budget back for amendment at that point. The undesignated general fund balance is projected at 8.4 million. That's about 18 percent of the operating expenditures. And finally, the fiscal year 2324 CIP budget of about, of 17.5 million includes 33 capital projects, including 10 new projects at the cost of 6.2 million. And as I mentioned before, includes 135 allocation from Roy Davis Trust Fund that requires separate approval. So this slide actually demonstrates that the budget is balanced, and you can see that projected net change to general fund balance projects 334,000 as the difference between revenues and expenditures. And you can also see that the general fund contribution towards the CIP program is included in this calculation. So that's the second circle that you can see 650,000 right above. And I just want to highlight that typically, capital transfers out considered to be one-time money. So they usually are not counted for balancing the budget. So that's again, the good news, that we are not deepening into reserves. And you see all the changes here on the slide. Now let's move forward. In the next few slides, we'll just talk a little bit about general fund revenues and expenditures. Let's start with revenues. You can see the nice 3.5 percent increase comparing, comparing to the revised budget. And this is despite the fact that fiscal year 2324 doesn't, budget no longer includes ARPA funds. The slide shows a breakdown of general fund revenues. Again, it's 48.9 million in general fund, and you can see this breakdown by major revenue categories. And as a fun fact, again, 34 percent of general fund revenues come from various taxes, as you can see it here. The next slide pretty much shows the same information in a table format, and you can see how it compares to the previous historical data, in particular fiscal year 21, 22 actuals. And again, some people just like seeing information in a table format rather than by chart. So so now let's move to the expenditures. So the total general fund expenditures budgeted at 48.6 million. This is just a marginal increase over the revised budget, about 0.4 percent from what we brought forward to you at mid-year. And again, the capital, the capital allocation of 650 included here, you can see it called out as a transfer out capital. And this chart shows expenditures divided by type. And you can see clearly that Pacifica is a full-service city, and majority of city services are performed in-house. As you can see, the salaries and benefits being the largest expense category with 65, 64 percent of general fund allocated towards salaries and benefits, and followed by 20 percent in contractual services. And once again, same information presented in a table format with some historical data here. As I mentioned before, again, Pacifica is a full-service city, 64 percent designated for salaries and benefits, followed by 20 percent in contractual services, 8 percent in material supply and transfers. And this is the last chart for general fund expenditures, again, showing the same information, but broken down by individual department. And you can see that public safety, police and fire together represent about 41 percent of the general fund budget, followed by general government, and as a third, largest department. But again, keep in mind that some departments like PBNR and especially Public Works have sizable portion of the budget in other funds other than general. After factoring in all restricted reserves and operating contingencies, you can see here on the slide, the ending undesignated general fund balance is projected at 8.4 million. So that's a circled red number you can see in the right bottom corner. And this is about 18 percent of the general fund operating expenditures, which is higher than than the recommendation that GFOA states for local entities of no less than two months of the regular general fund operating expenditures, which in our case would be about 7.9 million. There are no major changes to the other funds from what we reported to you at the last meeting, but we did incorporate the council's direction related to excess IRA funds. So you can see some movements related to that in affordable housing and disaster accounting fund categories. The summary of revenues and expenditures and fund balances included in your packets as attachment six. And they're comprised here, like, between these five categories. But again, you can see individual detail breakdown in attachment six or in the budget document itself. And finally, I want to mention that the City of Pacifica is a proud recipient of prestigious Budget Excellence Award in current fiscal year 2324 for its operating and capital budget. And we received this award from GFOA, Government Finance Office Association of U.S. and Canada. This is our very first national award. And in order to receive it, the document must satisfy nationally recognized the guidelines in four major categories that are listed here on the slide. And it has to be ranked as proficient in all four of these categories. So the budget has to be an efficient policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communication device. So I'm very proud to share that not only our budget was ranked proficient in all these categories, but also eight out of 25 evaluation criteria received outstanding top score from the evaluation panel. received outstanding top score from the evaluation panel. And we have redesigned the format of our document last year, as you may remember, to make it more informative, transparent, and hopefully aesthetically pleasing. And we are committed to further improve the quality of the document to comply with this high industry standards and best practices. So we... You may have noticed that we included some additional information in this year's budget, some financial schedules and additional information, and of course, even more pictures of this beautiful community. Many, many of them were taken by staff. And I think I can speak for the entire management team when I say that we all take pride in serving this community and hopefully, the documents before you speak to this as well. So today's meeting is a conclusion of our budget process. So with your formal adoption of the budget, the budget will be in place July 1. And I would like to take a moment to thank our finance team, especially again Deputy Finance Director Lucy Shea, Financial Analyst Mario Schrepp, and Matt Pressy, our financial advisor with RJS, for the exceptional work during this budget season and many late nights and weekends in putting this document together. And I also want to thank our entire executive team for their time and commitment to this project. I have to say that budget process is probably the most collaborative project that affects every single department and division in the city. And I greatly appreciate all help from department heads and other management staff and departments for the responsiveness and collaboration during this process, in addition to everything else they have on their plate. I also want to thank City Manager for his leadership, guidance, and the credible support of all these efforts. And finally, I would like to thank City Council for your leadership and strategic vision in setting budget priorities and supporting implementation of these highest standards and best practices in municipal budgeting. And we, as staff, are committed to continue addressing your strategic needs and priorities and improving the quality of this document in the future. And that brings me to recommendation slide again. You have three resolutions in your packets, and we recommend you adopt them.
So first of all, City Council would like to thank you and the team. You know, aside from, it's odd to look at a budget and say, wow, this is really pretty. And that's what you achieved, and it's also user-friendly, which also, you know, when you go from budget to budget, isn't necessarily something you find. So hopefully, we have another GFOA award in your future due to your efforts and your team's efforts, and thank you so much.
Yeah, we certainly intend to apply again.
Very good. The time is currently 10:45. I don't know how many questions or deliberations we'll have, but it occurs to me it might not be a bad idea just to hedge our bets since we are at 10:45. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we extend the meeting till 11:30.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Bowles.
I didn't even push my button.
We're reaching for it.
I just want to thank you too, Yulia. And I mean, all the work that's gone into this is very obvious. And it's not only beautiful, but it, I mean, that helps us all understand it, you know. And then I really appreciate like all the different descriptions of the departments and their own goals. You know, some of them are meeting our goals, but I see that they're also, you know, looking and thinking about how to improve services and processes and so forth. And so that's really neat for us to get a glimpse of what's happening behind the scenes that we don't usually see. Let's see. I was wondering if, I got a question from a member of the public about the money for the Roy Davies Trust Fund. And I think that's for community center improvements. But perhaps you were Director Peterson can just remind us what that money is for?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. So the Davies Trust Fund, what we have allocated from the trust fund right now is a Pridey Parks project. And also, there is a project within the community center that is addressing some carpeting and flooring issues.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then I, I thank you for answering the questions that I had emailed earlier. I did want to follow up on the beach parking fund a little bit. How do I kind of find my question? In clarification, so this is showing, this is on packet page 371, that there was going to be excess revenue over expenditures of 202,000. The total budget is, or the total revenue was 665, so extra expense. So this goes to pay for our three rangers, is what I understand through Public Works. So that seems like a big extra of, you know, about a third of the fund. And then I think, Yulia, you had clarified that there's extra money in the fund that's left over from previous years. I'm trying to look at all my notes now. So you're projecting a fund balance at the end of 647,000, which is almost that whole yearly amount. So I'm just wondering, you know, what has changed? Are there some services that we used to offer that we're not? Are there things that we might want to consider offering again? Because from what I understand, these monies can only be used for our beaches, according to the agreement with the Coastal Commission.
Correct. It's one of your enterprise funds. And what we clarified in response is that you accumulate in fund balance right now. So the use of this fund balance is going to be your future policy decision that we will be bringing forward for you. And as you can see, some of the staff has been, well, portion of staff time has been allocated to this fund on an ongoing basis. But you still have this little excess of revenues over expenditures, which is a good thing. Again, you're building fund balance for future decisions related to improvements or improvements of services related to the beach.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, it's important for this enterprise fund that we do have fund balance because we'll have future capital projects, necessary resurfacing of the parking lots or bathroom improvements or whatever. So like any of our funds, for one-time capital expenditures, that's important to have that bandwidth. The, while there may be some interim bathroom cleaning contracts that we could pay for out of that fund balance, we have to be careful about any ongoing obligations because there could be years in which, combined with capital projects, where we don't, you know, where revenues aren't exceeding expenditures. So that's a concern we have to be aware of.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. And I would certainly like to see, you know, an estimate of a bathroom contract, just to help our rangers be happier and not have staff turnover so much in that role. And then, sorry, this is, I'm not totally sure this is related to the investment policy. I read through that, and I don't think I had any questions. But I'm just wondering, this new, and then I printed the treasurer's report, which I understand will be coming to us shortly, as it usually does quarterly. With a new fund that we're creating for the Affordable Housing Fund, I mean, can that be in an account? Because it's now going to be a big chunk of money at, you know, 1,600,000 plus the 300,000 or so that is in that fund now. If that fund could be placed in an account where it's also gaining interest so that we can hopefully, you know, build it through that?
Well, I think you're mixing a little bit the allocation of general ledger versus investment portfolio. So all your funds are currently allocated, right? So they all earn interest. But how you distributing these funds in the general ledger between the funds is, I think it's the second page of the treasurer's report that you can see in. So in short, the money are not sitting in our checking account. So they all earned interest.
Okay.
And in what fund they distributed from an accounting perspective was the secondary question.
Okay. I think I didn't understand that we were able to at least get interest. So maybe you can explain just the investment policy. I mean, are there certain accounts or funds? Like I see the Roy Davies Trust listed in the treasurer's report for investment policy. So what's the difference? What puts something in the investment versus just an interest?
So, and we can have this conversation when we bring the next quarter investment policies or investment report. So we can, I can provide additional information, like how the funds are distributed between lay fund. Some money should be left in the checking accounts to just maintain the cash flow and operations. And I believe Roy Davies Fund has its own requirements related to the investments. So that's why it's listed separately.
Okay. I'll look for the treasurer's report for that discussion later then. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions from Council? Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I don't have questions. We haven't done public comment on this yet, have we?
No.
No, and that's why we're doing questions right now.
Okay. It's not really questions, there's just a couple of, well, there are questions. Shall I just go ahead? I'm going to go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm going to, you can always tell me if, no, that's deliberation or whatever, and I can save it.
I will sit poised.
Thanks. Okay. So I have a question about, let me find it. Oh. One of your slides, Yulia, you had the spreadsheet with the green bar going down the side, sorry. And I was trying to reconcile a table in the budget book with what was on your slide. And I'm thinking it might have been, I was looking at a document that was before we amended it. Is that possible? Because it looked like 18 million at the top, 18,613 or something. And the number that I was seeing was less than that?
Can you refer me to the page?
Okay, well, one of the, I think the one that was the higher amount that you had had on your slide was on packet page 261? Oh, no, that's a fund one, sorry, 260. And this document, this particular one with the green bar, it shows fiscal year 2023-24 proposed, 18,538. But I think in your presentation, and maybe I'm mixing up general fund with capital or something, it seemed like it was a higher overall. And maybe that was reflecting the amendments? Just give me a second.
Yes, correct. There is a discrepancy. So I believe the budget book has the information before it was adopted. I apologize. So we will definitely go over the budget document one more time and just clean up all the language. So the information on the slides are correct.
Could you bring that slide up again real quick? So I can look at, make sure I'm looking at the same thing? That my question actually makes sense?
That would be slide 12.
Slide 12. No, it was a chart. I think it's the next slide.
Yeah, before that. Well, after that, I'm sorry, the next slide.
Okay. Recommended, okay. That, I think that's the one.
Yes.
And so, can you go to the next page, Sarah, please? Okay, so, oh, but this is, again, this is the fund balance question. Right, okay. That's where I got a little confused. Because when I look at this slide, it matches what I see on packet page 261. And can you go back, Sarah, please, to number 12? And when I look at this slide, it doesn't match to what I see on packet page 260. And I'm not, I'm just trying to understand if it was a timing thing, like the previous one or something?
Correct. So it looks to me that in the budget document, we just didn't update the information with the direction you gave us last time.
Okay.
It's just a minor, yeah.
And on this slide, it does reflect that?
In the slide, yeah, all the slides and the budget resolution are correct.
I got it. Okay. Thank you for that.
And the budget book will be corrected before publishing.
Great. Thank you. And then you mentioned about a little bit of cleanup and things like that. On that note, oh, actually, now I'm looking at packet page 269. I just want to clarify that on the intergovernmental line, where we see in 2021, '22, and 2022, '23, really big numbers, is that where we see the ARPA money?
Yes.
And the reason it goes down closer?
Because we, right, exactly.
Because we don't have ARPA anymore?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
That's your 4.6 million difference.
That's what I figured, but I will ask. And then, on the next page, 270, I love this graphic. It is so helpful to come back to time and again. Councilmember Beer was referring to it when we were in a conversation earlier tonight. I do believe the very first slice of the dollar should be a text amendment to Pacifica School District.
Yes. I believe you mentioned it before.
And that's what I had right now, Mayor, thank you.
And if I can just clarify, Ms. Carter, for the resolution, which refers to the budget book, if, which is accurate? Because if the slides are accurate, but the budget book is not, then we just need to note that in the adopted resolution.
The adopted resolution includes correct number.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the slides are not?
The budget book was not, had an incorrect number, from my understanding.
Okay, so if the number is correct in the resolution?
Yes. The budget, yeah, the numbers are correct in the resolution.
Okay. And then we could just say?
But the budget book isn't attached to the resolution? Isn't an exhibit to the resolution, or is it?
The table that you see in the resolution includes all the correct numbers from the audit perspective. So that's the budget.
Is the budget book an exhibit to the resolution? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because if it is, then the motion will need to say as amended, and the budget book is as amended.
City Attorney, the microphone, if you please. Thank you.
I'm looking at the resolution.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the resolution. I'm trying to find the resolution myself.
So the table on the page two of the resolution, that's essentially the budget. And that's the correct information.
You're looking at packet page 180?
What's the packet page?
243 is the packet page for the resolution adopting the budget.
And I'm pretty sure that the budget book is not referenced there because we knew we were going to make some changes and cleanups.
Okay, great. And that answers my question. As long as the budget book is not part of the action at the council station tonight.
Yeah, this is just the proposed budget, and the numbers will not move.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? If not, we'll turn to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now. I have no cards in front of me. Emily, is there anyone on the phone line?
There are no raised hands.
No raised hands, no one from the audience. Then I am closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council for further questions, deliberations, or motion. Council, what is your pleasure?
I move that we adopt the resolution approving the FY twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four operating and capital budget. As amended?
Do we have to say as amended? Did we decide that, or no, we don't have to?
No.
Because it's right in the document.
Right. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Further deliberation? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Staff, again, just the lift it takes to get our budget up and running.
We have more.
Include all of these motions.
There's more motions.
More motions.
Oh, more motions? I'm sorry, I thought it was a one.
No.
Okay.
Because this one has to be a four-fifths vote, so adopt the full year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement program appropriation of one point two zero five million from the Roy Davies Trust Fund by a four-fifths vote.
I'm sorry, so that's another typo in the staff report, but the resolution, look at the resolution, it's hundred and thirty-five thousand from Roy Davies.
Thank you.
One million. Yeah, thank, yes. Okay. So appropriation of, sorry, say that again.
Sarah, can you pull up the recommendation?
Three hundred and thirty-five?
Hundred.
One hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five.
I was glad you asked.
I am a tired person.
And that?
Last slide.
Just to be clear, that's for the parks?
Parks and carpet.
Carpet? At the, at the community center, right? Okay.
Sorry.
Thought I heard her, but I didn't really hear her.
A hundred and, I'm sorry. Do you want me to start over? Adopt the FY twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement program appropriation of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred from the Roy Davies Trust Fund. Okay. And that needs to pass by a four-fifths vote.
Anyone like a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Item seven dash two passes unanimously.
If you'd like. Adopt the resolution establishing again appropriation limit for FY twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Seven dash three passes unanimously.
And adopt the resolution approving city's annual review of the investment policy included as exhibit A to the resolution with no changes for FY twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I will second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Seven dash four passes unanimously.
Now, staff, amazing job. There are no, not enough accolades. And all of our staff, because I know that department has put into making sure our budget came out right also, so thank you, everybody, the entirety, top to bottom. That being said, the time is eleven oh six, and the meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me, every time.